I've been interviewed by his media. And all he hears is yelling going back and forth. I mean, it's just terrible. I said, I bet you it's horrible.
He's done nothing. Why do you mean? I'm not supposed to. I got a lot of stuff. It's not my area. I didn't want to send you the motion.
He's got that. He was eating meat. Plus, he said, never, 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 never heard Doug raise his voice. He didn't run it from here. He didn't run it from there. Really, it's crazy. Did you fool anybody? They were being muted right by that little girl. They couldn't hear what I'm saying.
See, Kevin, are you gonna get a change on your short? I did. That was a shock when I woke up and realized.
Yeah, well, it was just.
Yeah. I found you. You guys called about me. It's very cool. I might have got it.
I'm glad we're here. 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 I still think you need to do the, I think you can keep it the neighbors. You know, after the, yeah. I want to. I think that we're gonna have 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 to. We have. 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 What was that? It was like down here. Yeah. Do you want me to do this? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. We've got four. Let's go. When do you? Where do you have this? Do you guys wanna get started?
Yes.
Chair. Hey, here.
Oh, chair.
No, it's okay. Do you want me to chair?
Yeah.
Wanna get started?
Yeah.
Let's go. 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 Oh. Oh. Did you turn it? Good morning.
Good morning. Like to call the meeting to order in respect for the time. Members of the public are advised that our meetings are webcast live by the City of Hamilton and temporarily archived on the city's website. Other individuals and media may also be audibly and/or visually recording this meeting. So this is a reminder to please shut off all your electronic devices. Changes to the agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Deputy Mayor, there is one change. Item 4.1 has a presentation with it, and that is the Trust and Confidence Report. So it's been moved to item 5.1. 5.1 will now become 5.2.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda as amended? Counselor Skelly, Counselor Vanderbeek, all those in favor?
Here.
Thank you. Declarations of interest, are there any? Nope? So, 5.1, this has been renumbered from 4.1. Trust and Confidence Report, Citywide, CM 18001. Chris Murray would like to provide the presentation for item 5.1. That was what the change of the agenda was at the beginning, that you actually helped move. Good morning. Hey, you got five minutes.
It does not include any responding questions.
Okay. If you do. Yeah. Yeah. No, they're, they're. One sec.
Good? Okay. All right, we're ready to go. Good morning, Madam Chairman and members of committee. Before I get started, I just want to recognize a lot of effort has gone into this work that I'm about to present, and Bridgette Menard, Michelle Williams, and Veol Muhler, three people, as well as many, many staff in this organization, over the last six months have put this together. It is a, it's an update of some work that was done a number of years ago, but with that, this is the Trust and Confidence Report. The, okay, this is not changing. How much should we pay for this?
I trust it was the right amount.
Yes.
Well, it's not the system, it's just the road. That's why she made it.
Are we good? Okay. So, Trust and Confidence Report, it's, as stated here, our first ever comprehensive performance report for the city. You'll recall back in 2012, we did a service delivery review. At that time, hired KPMG to work with staff on coming up with that report. I believe at the time, we spent almost $300,000, and we engaged for about 12 months in order to generate the work. This work has all been done in-house. We have not hired a consultant to help us with this. This has all been done by staff. So we've updated the work that was done in 2012, and added a considerable amount of more information. The purpose of all of this is to help our citizens understand what it is that we do for the $2.17 billion a year that is spent by the City of Hamilton. So it is about performance and a lot more. So it is a web-based report. I've seen too often, we create paper copies that does sit around, collect dust, and we don't want this to collect dust at all. In fact, we're gonna be updating this report on a regular basis. Of course, it's environmentally friendly, and it's in keeping, I think, where everything is right now, from a technology standpoint. So why Trust and Confidence? Why are we calling it Trust and Confidence? I've said this before, but back in 2000, the Conference Board of Canada engaged a number of senior bureaucrats in the question, you know, if the public, or private sector is all about profit, then what's the public sector all about? And through a lot of work and research that was done, looking at, you know, information across North America and actually around the globe, they came back with a white paper that basically boiled public service as about earning people's trust and confidence. And so we're a very large organization, and so public service, at the end of the day, when we show up and deliver what we deliver, if we're not thinking in our, in our minds when we serve our citizens, how to earn their trust and confidence, then I think we're missing the mark. And this is really some important, I think, work that the Conference Board did, and this is why we're calling the report what we're calling it. There's another reason why we're doing this, is I think Counselor Marula, in fact, back in June of last year, had talked to us about, you know, the progress that's been made since amalgamation back in 2000, and what are some of the improvements that we've made over the decade and a half approximately, that we'd wanna talk about and remind our citizens. So that information is in this report. Why does all of this matter? And it's really simple, I think. You know, results matter to all of us. When you spend $2.17 billion a year, people expect there be value for that money that's being spent. It certainly helps us track progress towards our strategic plan, and some of the information we're gonna see here is aligned to that clearly. And of course, it aligns the development of our multi-year budgeting and business planning. I mean, how well you perform is important, not just on a day-to-day, week-to-week, year-to-year basis, but over time, are you getting better at what you do? When you look at this report online, it really boils down to two basic sections in it. There's the services that we deliver today, and I'm gonna talk about that in a second. What are they? How well do we deliver them? And then there is what I will call snapshots of our city. So demographic information, information about our economy, information about how we, how well we run things, some of the challenges that we face, so really, information. So from a services standpoint, you'll recall back in 2012, I reported that time, it said that we had 89 services, 256 subservices. We have since gone through all of that, and applied the criteria that was established back then, to see whether or not, in fact, things align in the exact same way. And what we found, when we worked with staff on this, is that really what we have here, or what we would describe as 72 services and 243 subservices. And I'll get into that a bit more in a second. So the question is, so each of the services that we've, we've identified here, all 72, there is basic information for each one of those services, that you'll find in the profile section of our report. So of course, we have to describe the service. And then, of course, we have to describe the services that are related to it. For example, we talk about road access. There are, so road access is a service, and then some of the subservices that relate to road access would be things like road plowing and things of that nature. So that, that's kinda how things are broken down. The type of service, you know, is it a citizen-facing service, or is it a corporate service? I mean, if you look at audit, audit is a service that benefits us as an organization, but it's different than obviously, snow plowing, which is something that our citizens expect us to do. So that's, we wanna differentiate between the types of services. Then we have certain services that are a bit of both, like communications. Why are we delivering that service? Is it mandated by the province, federal government? Is it something that council has directed us to do? Where's the money coming from to pay for that service? So we wanna speak about that. You know, is it coming from the levy? Is it coming from the rate program, capital program? Where's the money coming from? And the level of service that we provide? Are we meeting the standards that have been set for us? If not, why not? And then the service level source, another important area of information, and then the performance measures, which I wanna focus a little bit on right now, because this is an important part of this, this inventory of services that we provide. So something that you've, may have heard of, and is widely applied in the public sector, is something called results-based accountability. And this is something that I'll mention in a moment, this grew out of the U.S. in the last decade or so. And the intent here is to make information about your services understandable to anyone in your community. So it really boils down to three basic questions. How much do you do of that service? How well do you do it? And is anyone better off? Those are the three basic questions that we're trying to answer about every one of our services. So that, the information is in fact meaningful to people. You know, if I say to you, I buy 2,000 wiper blades a year, you know, for our trucks, it doesn't really tell you much about that service. But you know, if I, if I describe for you, you know, how effective we are at road, at snow plowing and things of that nature, that's a little bit different. And so RBA, or results-based accountability, is an effective way to communicate with people. It's based on the work by Mark Friedman, who was a bureaucrat for about three decades. And he, and he addressed this very fundamental question about how do you effectively communicate what you do to people, so that they understand where their money's going from. And a number of cities and states throughout the U.S., and certainly here in Canada, have adopted this approach. So I'm doing this to grab your attention, the good, the bad, the ugly. So what does that mean? The good, the bad, the ugly. When I look at service delivery, the way that I think we have to think about it, is that, you know, are we delivering services in a way that we deem good, you know, bad, or ugly? And by that, I mean, if the service is meeting the standard that it's supposed to meet, or exceeding it, you know, and we're constantly looking at ways to improve that service, then I would say, I would categorize as a service as being done well, and it's good. We're doing a good job of it. The bad, to me, is when we're not meeting the standard that we're supposed to meet, or when we benchmark against others, we're well below the benchmark, that it's not quite establishing the kind of output that you really want. But I know staff are busy trying to improve upon it, then that's important, that it's not as good as it could be, but we are certainly making inroads to improve it, and I think that's important. So that, to me, would be the second category that we have here. And the worst, of course, is those services aren't meeting the standards, that are really ineffective, inefficient, and no one is paying attention to that, and they're not trying to improve upon it. So I think it's important, as senior management and people that work in this organization on our front line, to always be looking at the way in which we deliver services. Are we achieving what we're supposed to doing? Are we, are we making it better? Are we continuously improving? And if it isn't as good as it's supposed to be, what are we doing about it? And if we're not doing something about it, that's when I think we should be called to task. So that's the way we're looking at it. So of our services, the 72 services that I've been talking about, 243 subservices, when we apply RBA to all of them, we are about 71% there in terms of being able to effectively apply that standard to all of our services. And as I say, this is a project that is not a one-time thing. This is something that we're constantly updating. So for the remaining 28%, we're working with staff right now to make sure that, you know, we are able to kind of meet the tests that RBA asks us to meet. And so the next update, as you can see here, is April 2018. And there is a link to all of this, which was in our report, and this is something, if you want, to your constituents on your websites, put the link down, and people are gonna find out very quickly what it is that we do for a living. I put this on this, not because I expect you to read it, but these are the 72 services that we provide. And so, you know, when I think of the, the big companies in the world, whether it be, you know, the Googles, or the, or the GMs, or companies like that, I think you have to stop and understand that, when you deliver a broad array of services like we do, we're unlike other large businesses. You know, I think of, I mean, Counselor Connolly, and when you're in the private sector, I bet you the companies that you worked for, if you broke down the services they actually provide, they wouldn't number as broader range of services we do at any local, local government. So this is a tricky thing to do. And it's, it's made even trickier by, you know, certainly having to, you know, address a broad array of issues that you always do. But I think it's always important to get a sense of just all the services that we provide, you know, both internal and external in this organization. And so I've just taken here screenshots from our website to give you some indication of what it is that you'll find when you go on that, on that website, to see what we're doing with respect to trust and confidence. And so certainly, profile information, in this particular case, the, the service that we're talking about is energy initiatives. And so it describes very specifically what energy initiatives are all about. It then speaks to the related subservices, the types of services, the rationale, primary funding source, service level, service level sources. So it gives you information around that. And then it speaks to specifically the performance measures, the RBA, how much did we do, how well did we do it, and is anyone better off? The ones that we don't, we haven't arrived yet in getting the RBA component finished are the new services that you find, that we're now, we're now following and tracking. So smart city digital strategy. I mean, this relatively new, certainly wasn't around in 2012. And so we've updated our service profile to include that information. We are working on the, the performance measurements. We're not quite there yet, but this is an example of something that is still under, under construction, so to speak. But in this particular case, at least, we do address the, how much do we do, as you can see from an open data program perspective. Data set downloads is almost 6,000 digital service channels, the page views are about 14 million, and it gives you an idea of what it is that, you know, we've been tracking. Certainly in terms of top five data sets, you see what they are, and then you see the top five pages that people are accessing. That gives you that, some sense of just how it's performing from a, how much do you do perspective. But there's obviously two other questions that we have to address. This is the second part of the, of the information that's in our, on our website. So really, I call it snapshots of our city. So with that, you know, we are looking at our community, and by that, demographics, informations around that, that kind of topic, our economy, how, how our economies are performing, as well as our outlook. And by that, I mean independent assessments of our city. So I mean, we have an internal audit functioning, we have an external, talk about our strategic plan, taking the pulse of our city, and then our financial situation. So by way of example, our community, here's population information from 2011 to 2016, and it's broken down in terms of male, female, and it gives you a sense of just, you know, what our population compares over the last five years. So again, just an example of that. Household marital information. And there's a lot more in this report that will speak to really the demographics of the profile or community from that standpoint. Our economy, certainly real estate sales, you can see what's been happening over the last few years, so we got information on that, as well as unemployment rates. You can see how we've been progressing over the last few years in terms of unemployment. Again, a lot of information about Hamilton to give you a sense of the trajectory. And then checks and balances. Again, if you go into this, you're gonna get direct access to audit information. So whether it's our credit rating, or whether it's, you know, internal audit work that we've been doing in terms of our services, you know, are we adhering to the procedures and protocols? All that information is here, because I want people to know, you know, where we have challenges and where we're succeeding. People need to understand that. So that's what this outlook, checks and balances section addresses. And then management of discretionary reserves, another example of, you know, are we, do we have money in the bank to take care of the problems that we experience from time to time? And again, there's a lot of information there. So this is a very comprehensive accounting of just exactly how we perform service-wide, and how this community, and how we perform overall as well. So infrastructure assets, for example, when, again, our financial situation, we've embedded into our website's detailed reports. So if people want more information, they can get more information about what's driving some of the challenges that we're facing. So from a 20, from a 2000 to 2017 standpoint, there's information in the report that speaks to social, environmental, local economy, city finances, and assessment values. And again, you know, all of this is provided in a way that if people want to dive deep into how things have progressed over the last decade and a half, they can do that. From, so from a social standpoint, our population has grown by like 9.5% over that period of time. We look at things like median income, we look at consumer price index, and in both cases, median income has increased, but fortunately, consumer price increase, index has increased even more substantially. We have information on environmental, so how's our air quality progressed over the last decade and a half? And so we have information in that report that speaks to what's happening with respect to air quality. Smog days, I know, are down, as well as, you know, the work that we're doing with Hamilton Harbor. So what's going on from a water quality standpoint? There's a lot of detail in there about all of that progress over the last decade and a half. Local economy speaks to, you know, how's the real estate values been performing over the last decade and a half, to show people just, you know, what direction are we moving in. And of course, city finances, I mean, we talk about things like our credit rating. I mean, where we were in the very beginning, I think, was, was AA. We're now double A positive, and strong, and stable. So I mean, it shows you how it is that we're running the overall finances of the city. So again, all of this is linked into our website. So report updates, quarterly updates, that's how often that we're gonna be refreshing this information. And so the next one, as I say, is April 2018. What's coming soon is service and performance trends. So I wanna be able to show year after year, in a given service area, are we getting better? Are we staying the same? Are we getting worse? And then I wanna start documenting more clearly in our, in our report, all the things that we're doing to improve service delivery, 'cause I think that's important. And then one thing that is really important here is citizen feedbacks and action items taken. So this document, I do expect people to look at it, and I do expect to get people's comments, comments on it. So there are a number of sections in our report where we're specifically asking people to tell us what do they think. Is there information that they had expected to see that they're not seeing, that they think we should? So we wanna know that. This is a very interactive document. It's not your annual report that collects, sits on a desk and collects dust. This is meant to be engaging. And so, and we'll send this link to you, obviously, if you don't have it already, hamilton.ca/Trust and Confidence gives you access to all that information. Thanks very much.
Thank you. I have a speaker's list consisting of Counselor Green and Counselor Partridge. And now Counselor Pearson. So Counselor Green.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And to Chris, I really appreciate you bringing this report forward, very succinct and certainly comprehensive, I'm sure, in its details. You had listed in the points, I believe it's on slide 24.
Okay, I might need some help here.
So on the content, you had slide 21, which talked about the different ways that you're looking at improvements? And then you have community and our economy, specifically speaking to our economy on slide 24.
Right.
You have annual real estate sales and unemployment rates.
Right.
Surely, given the speculative nature of real estate, we know that that is not a sustainable, I think, consistent indicator of the health and vibrancy of our economy. What other aspects have been captured in that confidence report, you know, as it relates to our industrial tax base, or as it relates to the Deloitte study that we had on some of our sectors? Because I'm not clear that as a municipality, we're actively capturing the land value of these real estate transactions.
Yeah. So again, my, my attempt here was not to give you the, every single area or type of information that would fall under the our economy section of the report. So the information that you're looking for, I know in terms of non-residential tax assessment, I know that we have information that speaks to that, and speaks as well to the growth that's occurred in terms of residential taxes. So again, I would say, you know, there is a broader range of information that's in there, whether it speaks specifically to what you're suggesting, I would suggest have a look, and if it doesn't, those are the kinds of comments that we wanna hear back. You know, we're, we wanna be comprehensive as much as possible to tell the entire picture. You know, whether it's good news, bad news, or ugly, I mean, at the end of the day, people have gotta read this document in a manner to think that, you know, it answers the questions that ought to be answered. So I would suggest if you, you know, have a look, and if it's not addressing the things that you would expect, let us know, and that be something that
You know, we want to be comprehensive as much as possible to tell the entire picture. You know, whether it's good news, bad news, or ugly, I mean, at the end of the day, people have got to read this document in a manner to think that, you know, it answers the questions that ought to be answered. So I would suggest if you, you know, have a look, and if it's not addressing the things that you would expect, let us know, and that'd be something that we can turn our mind to.
Well, I would say the second point that is a little bit challenging for me, understanding our local social support network, Hamilton, over the last few decades, has been a magnet for people seeking to eke by an existence on social assistance. And we know that Hamilton has, I would say, a disproportionate amount of people through our OW and ODSP programs. And the challenge that I have with the unemployment rate is that it only captures people who are actively active in the job market.
That's right.
So how do we get kind of an unencumbered snapshot of what that job market looks like, inclusive of folks who aren't actively looking? So those are just a couple of the points. I think that, you know, if we're going to tell a story in a snapshot about our economy, I would like to see perhaps two points that are maybe more congruent and consistent and sustainable in creating a benchmark for this type of results-based, what was it called? RBG?
Results-based accountability.
Accountability, yeah.
So those are the types of comments, if I can, through the chair, that, to me, are very helpful. I mean, that, we want this thing to be as accurate a picture of our community as it can be. And to your, you know, to your comment about those that are actively looking for work that get captured in a particular stat, and those that are, that have given up, you know, you're saying, well, do we have a sense of those that have just given up? And where's that information in this report so that the picture is as clear as possible? So that's, I think that's quite helpful.
Yeah, I just, I want to venture away from the glossy.
Yeah, this is not intended to be glossy.
No, but give it respectfully, it is often the case in government where they'll tout unemployment rates.
Yep.
Knowing the economic mythology behind them.
Yep.
And, and I think if we were to put Hamilton in a real way compared, as a comparator to other places, just using that, like you have in here, that it's listed that Hamilton is outperforming the province, I'm not clear that that fully captures the economic state of the city, when there's a large portion of the population who are not actively engaged in searching for work. So that's just basic economics, kind of 101 you learn in your first year, not to necessarily trust that as an indicator for the vibrancy or the prosperity of a community. Those are my comments, and I'll certainly, is there a place that I can find an unabridged version of this report?
We put everything on this website.
Okay.
There's nothing unabridged. There's no, there's no more detailed draft or anything. This, this is everything that, that, you know, we felt should be put in a report like this. I mean, I've looked at performance reports across the country. I mean, there's one in Winnipeg that I rather like. You know, I mean, we've looked at, you know, where the benchmark is on this kind of annual reporting, and I think in some cases, we've exceeded what others do. And, and I think by making it a live document, one that we update on a regular basis, is, is again, different. So, and we are open to making sure that we, you know, we capture what people think ought to be on this, or in this report, and then work to provide that kind of information.
So I guess in close, my best avenue of seeking kind of a deeper understanding of results-based accountability is to pick up this book?
On the way, actually YouTube has got lots of clips from Friedman. I mean, we've got copies of this book. I mean, I can certainly lend you mine. It's worth reading, you know, to be honest. I think, you know, we are seeing lots of examples of this in Canada, and what I like about it is that, you know, it basically asks the, you know, pretty logical questions and, you know, and expects pretty plain English answers to those questions.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Very well put, Counselor Green. Thank you. We move on to Counselor Partridge.
Thank you, Chair. Chris, good presentation. Thank you. But similar to the previous speaker, there's two areas that, to me, are missing. When we talk about our economy, and perhaps it's just the heading of that particular slide. What is that noise?
Counselor Partridge, my apologies. It's, I'm adjusting it for one of the counselors.
No, and I agree with that as well, because I'm just finding this very difficult to look at, so. I'll just wait a minute. Well, we got doors opening, screens going up and down, light shades closing and opening.
You're having an impact on the building.
You know?
Oh, God.
And I only have a couple of questions, honestly. It's not, but thank you for the humorous entertainment there. And so coming back to the our economy slide, and it is focused on real estate, and I do realize that, but, you know, what I hear often from residents right across the city, they're interested in, you know, so what is our economy? What is part of our economy, and how is it made up? And I'll use the example of agribusiness, because of course, you know, rural area. Agribusiness represents approximately $2 billion impact to our economy. So that, to me, is our economy. What is contributing to that economy? Economic development is hugely important for people to know, that we do actively work to bring businesses here, to create jobs, you know, as you well know, when there's many examples throughout this city of businesses that have come to fruition. Stryker is just one in Flambeau that, you know, we were about to lose. It is now staying, there's a double in size building going up in the new business park. So I'd like to see a reflection in here that really gives that example to our residents. I think it's important that they know how hard we're working to grow the business and the economy in our city. So perhaps, Chair, just a couple of comments, Chris, on that?
Sure. Again, you know, as I, I think I said in the very beginning, what you have here are just snippets, are just selections of information. It doesn't, my, my attempt here was not to kind of give you every single bit of information that's in there, because this is a very lengthy document, so to speak. So, you know, information about our rural economy, you know, and all aspects of our economy is really what we're capturing in this section. So I've just taken a screenshot of a page. It's not, it shouldn't be interpreted as meaning that this is the full sum explanation of what's happening in our economy. There's a lot more information. I can't off the top of my head think of the slide that I have in this document that speaks, but if it's not there, it would be there.
Right.
And our, I mean, we live in a rural, urban community, and we should be describing it in that way. So I'm pretty certain that that information. And then the other thing too is that we've embedded into this thing the reports that might speak to the rural economy, might speak to employment, so that it's, you know, again, it's kind of a central clearinghouse for a lot of different information. And so, you know, where we can append a document that if people want to read more and more about a particular topic, it is linked into this, into this website, so. But your point is well taken. I'd be surprised if we didn't capture that. I'm just trying to think offhand the slide, and it's not coming to my brain, but.
Thank you. And I do appreciate the explanation. And Chair, you know, certainly I know when ECDV has done presentations here, they've provided, you know, a breakdown of percentages of different, you know, industries, and the focus that we're putting on food production and in attracting businesses to, and high-tech to our community. So I'll just leave that there. Hopefully, it is in here, but I will go through it. The only other, the only other thing that I saw missing, and, you know, bear in mind that even though I have my glasses on, the type is very small.
Oh, yes.
Sort of hard for me to go through. But I think it's important too that residents, and I'm, I've got a residence hat on right now, as a resident of the city. What is it that I would like to see in the report? And, you know, the other area is certainly our ownership of Eletra, our partnership in that, Hydro One, just, you know, what makes up the city of Hamilton in terms of how power is, electricity is distributed, but also our cogen operations and how important they are. And we own those. As taxpayers, we own those.
Right.
And I think that's, that's something that's hugely important. So my question, is that covered off in this attachments of this document?
Yeah, information like that, I mean, it, you know, I mean, we, I showed a slide here about our energy service that we provide, and so that kind of information, if it's not captured in the subservices, it's captured into, it's captured in other information related to how we manage energy in this, in this organization, so. But I know I've got a couple of people up in the audience that are taking notes on that, so. If that, again, our goal here is to, is try to tell as complete a picture as possible. And if there are things that, you know, are missing, you know, we're happy to go and find ways in or to embed them in this document. You know, we do want to be comprehensive. So to answer your question, I think that information is probably in the body of our report, but we'll go back to make sure it is.
You know, and I worry though, we sit around this table, we have the benefit of presentations and knowledge coming from staff to us, we have the ability to ask questions, we get the information. But I worry about reports, which, and this is great, by the way, I mean, I'm very supportive of it, but I'm worried about things being buried, and information that people want to know right up front.
Yep.
If it's buried in there, you know, I just ask that you take another look at it through a different set of eyes, perhaps. The only other question I have, Chair, is with the link that's being provided, which is on the last page, is it exactly this presentation with the links in the presentation?
Oh, no, 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 no. It's, I think when we.
It's different than this, then?
Oh, yeah. This is just, this is a very high-level just synopsis of the web. We have a website that has, you know, hundreds of pages, if you will, of information that documents all the services that we provide, and then documents, you know, the snapshot of our community. So it is, this is just meant to whet your appetite, is all it's really meant to do. And I think when we had sent the report out last week, we had identified that the body of information that that report is speaking to, there is a link in it that if you've had a chance to go online, you would see just the, you know, the expansive information that's there. So, but, so, I mean, these questions are good questions, because I, and I say that simply because, you know, we want to make this a really effective portal on our website for people to really get a comprehensive view of, of, you know, what's going on in the city in the way of service delivery, and just, you know, where have we been in terms of, you know, as a community, from a demographic standpoint, from an economic standpoint.
Right.
A financial standpoint, very broad array of information. And where we can, we want to link those detailed reports that you've heard over the last several years or months, whatever the case may be. So if someone has a real passion for asset management, for example, I want them to have a link on our site here that they can go right into the asset management reports by example, or go into an audit report and go into whatever so that they can go as deep as they want, or if they're not interested and they like it at a fairly high level, that information's there as well.
All right. Thank you. And I will certainly be putting this on, on my website, you know, for residents, because, you know, within the rural areas, and I'm, well, right across the city of Hamilton, actually, we hear repeatedly, every one of us, particularly as we go door to door and work with our, with our residents, you know, what am I getting for my tax dollars? I'm paying all this money in taxes, and what are you doing for them?
This is what this is about.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you. Counselor Partridge. We move on to Counselor Pearson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and Chris, thank you. Excellent report, and I've always said, and as we've come through the years of recognizing our primary services and our subservices, I've always said, this is great steps moving forward, because as far as I've been concerned, residents believe all we provide is snow clearing and grass cutting.
Yeah.
And garbage pickup. I added grass cutting now. But, you know, it's, this is, this is very, very comprehensive information to get out, and I really appreciate that it's a living document, it's not a document that's going to get shelved. Can you just explain to me how, is it a matrix or like a template that's being set up with the primary services and subservices that's going to be used quarterly?
Yeah.
If I can through you, Ms. Chair.
Yeah, through the chair, absolutely.
So it'll be easy for someone to follow that?
Yeah. In fact, whenever we make changes, we'll mark them in a way that people know what's changed and what hasn't, so they can go right to the changes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And today on slide 13, and I appreciate Counselor Partridge raising some of the concerns of items that haven't been included, recognizing that this is just a snapshot at this time. So I just want to be sure, and certainly because you say staff are listening, we haven't included police in here unless I've missed it.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's certainly a service that we fund. Yeah, I mean, it is. That, that's a good point. I think, I'm just trying to quickly go through where that might be captured. But again, I think, you know, let us, let us take that back. I mean, that's, I mean, I think in some respects, when I talk about services, I'm thinking about them from the standpoint of the services I have direct oversight of, if you will, as an organization. I'm not saying that the police, you know, but I think that, and when I look, you know, I look at other municipalities, and I'll have a look, I'm.
You're right. I agree, because we don't show library, and we fund the library as well, but there might be somewhere we need to capture that.
Yeah, no, but that, but those are the kinds of things that I, you know, how are, but actually, to your point though, I mean, when we say 2.17 billion, embedded in that is monies that are going to these so-called outside agencies. So, you know, let us, let us have a look at that.
Thank you for that. And the other end is the lodges. We have two seniors lodges that we, we maintain, and that's under our umbrella, and I don't, unless I'm missing a sub-bullet on there, I can see it.
I mean, they, it's likely in a subservice of one of these services. So I think what, I think what you're saying is, is there a way in which we'd be able to search this database to kind of find, well, where is the service, subservice that speaks to lodges? So that's, that's a good takeaway if that's not already built into the system.
And you went right into my last question, is wonderful that we have the 72 principal services. Would there be a time where we will list the subservices as well?
Well, the subservices are in fact listed.
Okay.
And if you go to the profile of each one of these services, you'll see a section that addresses subservices. But, you know, this is, the searchability of this is something that I'll just go back and make sure that we've got, you know, if it's not available, I'm sure it is, but if it's not, we'll make sure it happens.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Pearson. Counselor Whitehead.
Thank you. I would hope, and I do agree, that it's a great, great foundational report, and, and there are obviously areas for tweaking as comments are coming forward. And obviously, from my perspective, you know, whatever our budget is, we need to be accounting for, and, and that would include things like the police services, the library, conservation authority, and whatever other outside sources that we're funding, and that would be a different category, but it should be listed so that there's accountability in every tax dollar that's being spent. The other piece I want to, because I caught part of the earlier conversation, when we look at, and we compare ourselves with many other communities, we're comparing on, you know, apples to apples in regards to the benchmarks and measurements that are currently, and best practices that currently exist. So the other thing to understand, certainly from my economic background, is that full employment can be anywhere between 3% and 5%. And the reason why the system is designed in the way it is, is because if you have higher employment than that, then that's when you get into higher interest rates, higher inflation, and, and so the perfect running economy is based on a certain population being unemployed. That's just the reality. That is the model. And I don't think that model will ever change. So having said that, I just want to make sure that there's an understanding that the way our economics is built and our system is designed, there was always going to be a small percentage of people between 3% and 5%, as I understand it, that will be deemed as a full employment in the context of the economy. So when we come into Hamilton, I understand we want to maybe peel back that a little more to understand how many people just gave up.
And I think through the chair, I think that was Counselor Green's point, is I don't think it's, I don't think full on, full employment, I think 5% is pretty high. I think it's probably just less than 3. But to the point that I think you're making and Counselor Green is making, you know, those people that are not actively looking for a whole variety of reasons, what percentage of our population does that, does that entail? So that's a good point. I don't believe we have that specifically in our report, and, but it's something that, you know, to get at, you know, the sources that would provide that kind of information. I mean, again, we're not trying to, we're just trying to portray the picture. It's not meant to be pretty, it's not meant to be ugly, it's just meant to be the picture.
Yeah, well, and I have a different tack. I mean, I think what you're doing is you're applying the best practices and measures and benchmarks that are currently applied across municipalities, across North America, period. If you're looking for something different, then you may have different outcomes, but let's be clear and understand that then you're creating a different benchmark that isn't being utilized across North America. And now when those comparisons come up, you find yourself in a situation where you may be criticized because people don't understand the data and information that's actually being provided. So I just want to make sure that there are nuances to the reporting, and I understand why we want to better understand what's going on in the city of Hamilton, but I also want to caution that as long as the measurements and the standards and the best practice are what they are. what they are, we shouldn't be drifting away from those, those tools. Thank you.
Councilor Marula.
Here's later. Hello. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Chris, I just, on the, on the slide that was emphasizing the actual real estate issues, and this, as you know, is a hot topic locally, as we move forward and progress and things are looking incredibly positive for those that own properties, but yet very challenging for those that are trying to get into the market. And most recently, there was a report in the Hamilton Spectator about an East End apartment, and there are other examples throughout the city where outside investors are coming in, purchasing these, these properties and then forcing residents out, remodeling the apartments and increasing their rent. Understanding that there's a lot of good things about that, about the renewal aspect, but a lot of bad things with respect to displacement of it all. The problem that we're faced with, as we are on a number of fronts, is that a lot of people think that we as a city have control over that, which, which we don't. And I'm wondering if perhaps we can, we can have some sort of in-service or a report that outlines, because this is only going to get worse rather than better in the future, but just who does what when it, when it comes to that issue, and how we as a municipality can advocate potential legislative changes to assist along the way. So through you, Mr. Chairman, Chris, if you can elaborate on, on that issue from, from your knowledge and, and means of perhaps addressing it as well.
So I think what you're, what you're talking about touches on the whole gentrification challenge that, you know, municipalities experience when their market moves in a very positive direction, so to speak. Positive for some, not positive for a bunch of other people. And so, you know, what controls do we have, you know, or what abilities do we have to kind of address the types of problems that, that unfold when that happens? I mean, you're right, I mean, we have some, some ability to, you know, address housing issues, I mean, we don't control it all, I mean, we're one, as you know, I think the only province in the country, and if you go around the world, I mean, it's unusual for cities to be kind of left with that challenge, but we've had it. And when we inherited it, we inherited a housing stock that was inadequate to begin with and no money really to fix it. But I think, you know, kind of who does have responsibility is, I mean, that kind of report would certainly delineate what we can do about gentrification and what others can do at upper levels of government to address this challenge. So, I mean, that's, that's something that we certainly can do, but we don't, we don't have infinite money and nor do we have controls of all the programs. In many cases, the programs are somewhat mandated to us and we're expected to deliver them in the manner which they, the province or federal government expects. So we don't have, you know, complete autonomy to address, you know, those kinds of problems.
And I think that's an important aspect, as I mentioned in the past, we get blamed from everything from the Afghan war to potholes. This is just another example of something that's happening in our city.
Yeah.
And I can, I can recall a time when, when each election we were told, or people were demanding, what are you going to do to revitalize this city? And now we're at a position where because of all the revi- success, what are you going to do to protect those that can't move ahead with everyone else? And, and the problem is we can't do everything on our own, and upper levels of government are our biggest challenge. And I'm glad that Maria, or Councilor Pearson, mentioned the fact that some services on that list weren't included, because most of those services are related to services that we tax for but yet have no control over. And again, the downloading file, which seems to be getting larger rather than smaller, and very unsustainable. It will ultimately implode, it will ultimately be in a situation where it will need to be fixed. We've already been on record accordingly. The province is in denial over the issue, and through you, Mr. Chairman, we are having a summit, I believe, soon.
Yeah.
Any update with respect to that initiative?
Yeah, actually, those, that meeting with you and the mayor, you as the Chair of the Government Relations Task Force, Mike Zagarik and John Hurtel and I are coming to you with the outline of what it is that we need to focus on for that summit, so that our citizens understand exactly what you've been talking about for a number of years in terms of what controls do we really have over matters and, and, you know, our abilities to affect things are pretty limited. So that, we're meeting, we, I think the meeting is either been set up or is being set up right now, so, and we want to get at this, you know, in the next few weeks to kind of make sure we got agreement on the scope of this and the approach. And so, so we haven't, we'll nail that down when we sit down with you guys.
And just finally, Mr. Chairman, there is no bigger issue that we're faced with than the downloading file?
Yeah.
When we're, when we're taxing half of our operating budget for services we don't control directly?
Yeah.
That is the most significant democratic deficit in the entire Western democratic hemisphere. And that's the only way you can describe it, so I appreciate that.
So I will just add this through the Chair, that if you look at the 72 services, one of the, there's one bit of information in each one of them that speaks to the rationale for us providing that service, and it speaks to, you know, is this something council wanted to do, or is this something that's mandated by the province? So you can go through each one of our services and know very clearly based on this inventory what it is that we are told to do versus what it is that we're doing on our own volition, you know? So I mean, that, that, you know, the taxpayer can go through our inventory on this, on this website and see that, but the summit will bring it all to a very crystallized head. And as you know, Joe Rinaldo years ago had brought a report to committee around downloading, and then I think Mike a few years ago brought a report to you guys that spoke to, you know, because we were always told that it was going to be, you know, revenue neutral. And I think Mike's report the last couple of years is, it hasn't been, clearly. We're going to build off of that, and we're going to, you know, bring some of our more current concerns that we have, that, then all of that, I think, is going to shape the scope of the summit, so that, again, good information for the community to know what we have control over and where, you know, we're falling short of the mark in terms of delivering things, because we haven't gotten the support from upper levels of government.
So lastly, I'm reemphasizing in a friendly manner that half of everything we tax for, we can't control directly, but the province does, so that's, that's something that can't never be overstated. I appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you, Councilor Marula. That exhausts my speaker's list. We need a motion to receive the presentation. Councilor Scally, Councilor Whitehead, all in favor? And motion for the report, Councilor Vanderby, Councilor Conley, all in favor? Carried. 5.2 is our budget overview. Zagarik will follow up. Oh, sorry, Mr. Zagarik will follow up after Mr. Murray. So, Mr. Murray.
Okay, I'm just going to, as I, every year when we kick off the operating budget, I usually provide a little bit of a front end to Mike's presentation, so that's really what I'm doing here. Years ago, you'll recall when I first started, the, you know, the message to me was, you know, it's great to have a strategic plan, but we need to get a few things done. We're not trying to boil the ocean, so I usually talk a little bit about the strategic plan and then the priorities of that plan and how that aligns with the budget, and that's what I'm going to do right now. So a vision, I don't need to tell you, it's probably ingrained in all of our memories, so it is as you see here, best place to raise a child and age successfully. Our mission is as stated here, and again, you know, we had worked on this when we adopted the 2016 strategic plan, and it reads as you see. And then, of course, our culture, which is, you know, kind of when we wake up every day, how do we approach our work? And so it is based on those five pillars. Our priorities, I just want to take each one at a time and just give you a little bit of insight as to what we're focused on in each of these priorities, and then turn the floor over to Mike. Community engagement participation, there's probably nothing that is more important or is more of a pinnacle than the moment in which we go to the polls and every four years and you're elected. So this year, of course, is 2018, and there is going to be a municipal election, so that first and foremost is in our, in our, on our list of things to do and do well. Of course, you know, we are finding other ways to share information with our community, and so we've been, you know, between what we're doing in the way of open data, you're also going to see apps start to unfold here at the city. I saw an article the other day about the snowplows, there will be a City of Hamilton app, there will be a number of apps that are going to be coordinated, better ways to provide information, engage our citizens in the services we deliver. So those are some of the things that, that we're doing, and I would argue that the trust and confidence report is a way in which to engage people on the services that we provide. Our economy, you've always said, grow the non-residential tax base, as you well know, 2017 was a banner year from a building permit standpoint, almost $1.5 billion. And what marks, I think, 2017 from other years is that we're seeing more progress being made in the non-residential sector. And so it's not all institutional, we're now seeing businesses proffer, so that's important, and we're going to stay focused on that. Certainly Stalco is in our, in our focus, 500 acres of already service industrialized land is something to be focused on, and so we're going to continue to see if we can't move that in the right direction. And then, of course, we have some challenges that we're going to be addressing in terms of impact and, and just how they've pegged the values of land there. So it's a bit about increasing, you know, the non-residential tax base, but also dealing with efforts that are unfolding that work against that tax base, so we're, we're going to be focused on things of that nature. And of course, our economic development strategy, we're going to be, you know, stretching to achieve the goals in that. Healthy and safe communities, as you well know, we are merging the functions, there's a report coming February 7th, we've hired a general manager to oversee that, and Paul Johnson is here to do that. And when we present the budget, you'll see how monies are being allocated, both in the public health and the community services realm. Paul will be providing that, that presentation in the coming weeks. You know, the question about why are we doing this, certainly it is a priority of our strategic plan, and you have to look, when you think about public health, you know, a lot of what matters in public health is certainly the work that's been going on for years in community emergency services. And as well, I should add that we are focused on, you know, the introduction of marijuana being sold in this city and across this country, so how that unfolds is, is a priority, and we have to make sure that it's done effectively. And then the other is our role in, in dealing with the opiate crisis, and I know Dr. Richardson has been updating on that. Clean and green, you know, we're going to continue on with our water, wastewater works. There's been monies given to us by the provincial government to tackle climate change, so there's dollars that we've been given to establish a governance structure, not unlike the Hamilton Harbor Remedial Action Plan. So that is going to help marry our activist community and our technical professionals in, in a process where we're going to hopefully get more money from the federal and provincial government to continue to address and tackle climate change. Built environment, I mean, obviously the LRT is still front and center in our minds, so we're going to continue to work, to evolve that work, we're going to complete the $300 million capital works that are associated with a water wastewater plant, and we're going to continue to fix our roads and build all the things that we're supposed to build. Culture and diversity, we have an indigenous strategy that's unfolding this year, I mean, the truth and reconciliation report has challenged municipalities, and I think Hamilton is well positioned with the people that we have in our organization to help drive that work forward, and we will make progress on that this year. We'll do more than just have a strategy, we'll actually implement some, some of the works that will come from that strategy, as well as we're going to continue to attract the, you know, the big, the concerts to Hamilton and continue to celebrate music and art in this community and as we've done in the past. And then our people and performance, I must say that the, right now, there is a survey out in the community of our citizens in terms of how well we deliver services. We're going to be coming to you in the next few weeks with the results of our employee survey. And in terms of performance, you know, the document that I just presented is a, encapsulates, you know, all the services that we provide and some services, subservices, and speaks to how well we perform them. So these are the kinds of things that are in place. You are going to see more work done with our, our dashboard, there's a number of more dials that are coming live as we speak, another way to make sure that people understand how well we do what we do. So with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mike. And Mike, it's all yours.
Great, thanks, Chris, and good morning through you, Mr. Chair. The, and I appreciate Chris's introduction, and I'm just going to use the opportunity to highlight how the budget has evolved as it relates to the front end of this presentation, and that is the strategic plan and the priorities. You'll see in the publication that you would have received, it was our Christmas gift to you in late December, is the budget as well as the business plans. And so the addition of business plans into the budget document provides that linkage of how the budget goes to supporting council strategic plan and the priorities, as well as the vision of the city of Hamilton. And so it's a starting point with respect to evolving the budget process, but I do want to recognize the City Manager's Office and Corporate Communications for their efforts towards the product that was provided to you in terms of the budget document. So thank you to the City Manager's Office with respect to their work on the business plans and to Corporate Communications with respect to their work on the budget documents. I also want to thank my staff, Brian McMullen and his budgets, as well as his finance admin staff, for all their work towards compiling the information that was provided to you in December and in advance, thanking them in advance for all the work that they will be undertaking in the coming months to help council with respect to your deliberations on the 2018 operating budget. As Chris made reference to this, earlier this morning, our global budget is approximately $2 billion, 2.17 billion, and what committee will be focused on in the coming months is the tax-supported operating budget. The tax-supported operating budget represents approximately $1.5 billion gross expenditures, and so that is what committee will be deliberating towards in the coming months. So just in terms of my presentation this morning, we're going to focus a brief overview of the 2018 tax-supported operating budget, some information with respect to assessment, assessment growth, as well as some headwinds we're facing. Chris made reference to, to Stalco as a challenge, and we'll expand and provide some more context with respect to some of the challenges, as well as some of the positives. Again, Chris made reference to building permits and that, that activity eventually translates into taxable assessment, and that provides additional revenue to the city of Hamilton towards reducing our levy pressures going forward. So again, as well as some of our challenges with respect to assessment, we'll also capture some of the positive messages with respect to assessment growth. As well, it's typically through the budget process, items get referred by council to the budget process, and so we have a short summary of those items. I don't expect to deliberate on those items today, but it's just a snapshot of what to expect in the coming weeks in terms of council-referred items. You'll also see the inclusion of business cases into the budget process. You might be more familiar with, with staff-referred items or enhancements, so in, in alignment with introduction of business planning are now business cases. And so there are a limited number of business cases that will be brought before committee in the coming weeks for your consideration. And again, while they're part of my presentation today, the intention was just to provide you a summary of those business cases and not to discuss or deliberate those today. Some additional information and just a summary with respect to the budget process, and finally recognizing that council requested that staff embark on a multi-year budget process at the tail end of today's presentation will give you some sense of what to expect for 2019, 20 and 21 as it relates to our four-year, multi-year budget cycle. So with respect to, just as a reminder as to what council approved as it relates to guidelines, you approved a user fee guideline, that report was brought to you prior to the end of 2017 and approved, that guideline was a 2% guideline excluding certain, certain fees and charges, including golf, transit and ice rental. All city departments were directed to develop a 2018 operating budget according to the target, and that target was 1.5%. target, and that target was 1.5%. I can report, as I did, I believe, previously, that all city departments have achieved that target. We are at or below 1.5% with the exception of Public Works as it relates to transit, and I'll expand on that in a few moments. Boards and agencies were also requested to bring forward a 1.5% budget, and if they require a levy increase over and above 1.5%, a rationale for that increase. And again, I have captured, to the best of our ability, where the boards and agencies sit, and recognizing we have some further discussions with the conservation authorities, you'll see that captured as it relates to what was presented in the budget book. And with respect, finally, with respect to the capital budget, committee will recall that council approved a tax support, 2018 tax support capital budget. It's captured both a 0.5% levy increase for what I would describe as our traditional capital infrastructure programs, and over and above the 0.5 was a 0.4% increase to support the city's contribution, $36 million contribution, in order to leverage the federal government's $36 million contribution for transit. So just a reminder with respect to your guideline to staff. With respect to our starting points, you may recall in August, we provided an outlook. That outlook was somewhat positive based on our historical position. In August, our outlook was, we were forecasting a levy increase of $43 million, which would have represented a residential tax impact of 4.8%. The budget documents that you would have received in December highlights the fact that staff continued to work through the fall season, entering into the winter season towards council's target. Happy to report that the budget documents that were presented to you captured a budget levy increase of $23.6 million, which effectively reduces the potential impact on residential property owners to 2.4%. So how did we get there? How did we get from 40, approximately $44 million down to $20, $24 million? There were some reductions with respect to boards and agencies, principally police, relative to their five-year average. The operating impacts from capital have been revised. You'll recall each year, previous capital projects as approved and brought in service, there are operating impacts. Our preliminary forecasts identified some pressures over and above what we've most recently updated and revised. As well, there were some amendments to our forecasting as it relates to salary and wages that represent approximately $1.5 million. We revisited all of our inflationary pressures, our contractual obligations, as well as looking at our revenue opportunities, and that represents approximately $17.9 million in amendments. One of those amendments was social housing. You'll recall that social housing has been increasing over the past number of years. We were forecasting in August a 1.9% increase in social housing, but what you will see in the budget documents, as well as the presentation, is actually a reduction in the levy pressure as it relates to social housing. So that captures some of the adjustments of how we've arrived at the starting point of a 4.8%. What was presented to you through the budget documents at 2.4%. And I'm happy to report, we're currently at approximately 2.3% with some further adjustments, and that is principally the police budget. When we published the document, the police board had not deliberated on the budget, 2018 budget. We assumed a five-year average, and police approved a 2.45% levy, which is below their five-year average. So again, as I just described, the update that I'm providing to council or committee today captures the Hamilton Police Services approved budget of 2.45%. That represents an amendment of just short of $900,000 from what we had assumed, which is a five-year average. That captures one of the adjustments as it relates to how we are arriving at 2.3% from our 2.4% published starting point. Another amendment is you would have received a update Wednesday with respect to the volunteer firefighters. There were some interest arbitration decisions that is creating a pressure of approximately $160,000, and so that is captured at this point as an amendment to the budget. I do want to highlight as well, staff are analyzing the interest arbitration decision as it relates to local 288s. That may also result in a budget pressure. It's somewhat preliminary. We're continuing to analyze that, but our preliminary analysis would suggest a further half-million-dollar pressure going into 2018 as it relates to that outcome. So again, I will provide additional information in subsequent meetings with respect to those outcomes. And again, it's always relative to our contingencies that we set aside. So again, where are we today? We are at 2.3%, 2.3% on an average household assessed at $315,000, represents an increase of about $77. And I'll take you through some of the impacts as it relates to city departments, boards and agencies, and capital financing. I'll start with capital financing. As I mentioned, council approved a 0.9% capital levy. 0.5% was all attributed to our traditional blocks or discretionary funding. The 0.4 dedicated towards supporting transit. What you see as well is boards and agencies represent an additional 0.4%, and that is principally Hamilton Police, as well as library and the conservation authorities. And finally, city departments at 0.9%. So just a reminder in terms of the guideline was 1.5%. If I look at that 0.9% relative to the last three-year average, city departments have come in in the last three years with an average increase of 1.75%. So we're at a very good starting point with respect to the city departments going into 2018. A few other messages on this slide, and I'll speak to those, is we are assuming assessment growth of 1%. Net 1%. And what is affecting our overall assessment position are a couple factors. You'll recall, we are in year two of a reassessment period, and there were two shifts that affected residential. The first shift was residential property assessments exceeded the growth rate of other classes excluding farmland. And so that represents a 0.5% shift onto residential. We had this experience in '17. It's a four-year reassessment phase, and we're going to continue to have this experience in '19 and '20 as well, as part of the four-year period. So again, that is captured in the 2.3%, recognizing that affects the residential. Mitigating that or offsetting that is 1% net assessment growth. We expect we would have been at about 1.4%, 1.5% were it not for reassessments, including the Stalco change in valuation for 2018. So that change in valuation for Stalco represents 0.2%, and that is already captured in the 1%. So again, we had assumed 1%, and thankfully, our gross figures were over and above the 1% in the area of 1.4, 1.5. We're not seeing an additional pressure in terms of our current position as it relates, for instance, to Stalco. We're able to maintain that 1% net impact, but had it not been for that decision, for instance, just the Stalco decision alone, the 2.3 would be at 2.1, which is where council approved the budget in 2017. So just in terms of providing you some context as to some of the impacts affecting this in 2018. And I'll speak to the second shift, again, residential, two impacts. Higher assessment valuation relative to other classes, and the other impact of residential will be the varying impacts of reassessment across the boards, and I'll speak to that in a few minutes. So in terms, most part, the 1.5% guideline, there are departments that are below the 1.5. For instance, you'll see community emergency services at a net negative of 0.4. When you net off the Ontario Works Upload Benefit, you'll see at the bottom of the table, community emergency services would be at 1%. I spoke previously to Public Works. Public Works is reporting a increase over and above the 1.5, and what is affecting Public Works is principally transit. And specific to transit, it is the pressures as it relates to year three of the transit strategy, as well as some increases in ridership as it relates to DARTs, and I'll get to that in a few minutes as well. Boards and agencies. You'll see the breakdown as it relates to boards and agencies. Again, what we've captured is the most recent decision by the Police Services Board. It was a 2.45% increase, and that represents approximately $3.9 million. Other boards and agencies were reflecting that 1.9% or approximately $800,000. And again, you'll see the reference to the capital financing, the 0.9% capital levy increase, and that represents an additional $7.5 million. So with respect to some of the more significant budget items, transit strategy represents a increase of about $2.1 million, and that really represents the additional, the addition of approximately 29 FTEs to support the next year of the transit strategy. 26 of those are operators. As well, it captures the contribution to reserves. The next year, the transit strategy encompasses an additional 16 buses, and to maintain those buses in future years requires reserves. And so within that $2.1 million, it captures contributions to reserves. I mentioned previously, one of the other pressures within the transit budget is assessable transit. Assessable transit's increasing at approximately $1.7 million, and that captures both increase in ridership as well as AODA requirements, increase in ridership. Currently, we're assuming an additional 41,700 rides to be delivered in 2018. So again, that is captured as well in that $2.1 million figure. Some other pressures or changes, winter control. Previously, we would have assumed a continuous average of winter control. We just would have taken the historical experience, and we would have averaged that out. What we're identifying is that doesn't, no longer represents our experience, and staff are recommending going to a five-year average to better represent our winter control or our winter experiences. And so that represents an additional approximately $1.1 million. Some other pressures, principally employee-related within Public Works, and you can see that the subtotal for Public Works, approximately $7.6 million. Operating impacts from capital. You'll recall each year, as historical capital improvements are brought in service or introduced, there are operating impacts. We have approximately 40 projects, capital projects, which will be introduced in 2018. Those 40 capital projects represent an additional $1.2 million in operating costs as well as FTEs. And the most significant of those projects in terms of FTEs, I believe, is about 18 and a half, and that is for the Scott Park Precinct, Seniors and Recreation Center. Additional resources required to support that. So the Scott Park Precinct Recreation and Senior Center. So in terms of impacts, that represents about $1.2 million, as well as there are, again, some employee-related expenses. Some of the other departments, corporate services, we are reporting a increase of 0.4 million, planning inactive. Similarly, a 0.4 million increase. Public Health Services, 0.2. City Manager, 0.1. And again, Community Services, controlling for the upload benefit would be 1%. When you roll in the upload benefit, it is a reduction of 900,000 net of all the other pressures, 0.2 for the other departments. So city departments represent approximately $10.5 million in pressures. So employee-related, employee-related costs represent about 55% of our global net operating budget, and so recognizably, employee-related costs represent a significant portion of our pressures going into 2018. Just our contractual obligations and some contingencies we have for some unsettled negotiations represent approximately $7.2 million. Again, that does not capture what I described previously, the potential risks with respect to the interest arbitration decision for local 288. Personal emergency leave days. This is something relatively new. You would not have necessarily seen this in historical budgets, but we've discussed this for some part over the last few months. This is a outcome, the province's change in legislation as it relates to some of the employee entitlements. You'll be most familiar with the minimum wage change. One of the other changes was the entitlement for two paid personal emergency leave days. What staff have done is, we've looked at our workforce, tried to identify those individuals who could leverage this entitlement, whose work would have to be backfilled or supported. So as an example, when a paramedic, for instance, were to trigger a personal emergency leave day, they would have to be backfilled or supported. And so those are the positions that we've made an effort to estimate what the financial impact is. What we've tried to control for is when a member from senior leadership team trigger a personal emergency leave day, there isn't someone necessarily who backfills that position. That work awaits them when they return. And so we've tried to control for that. So for those positions that require to be backfilled, what we've identified is those personal emergency leave days represent a cost, potential cost to the corporation of about $1.26 million. So that is what is represented in the personal emergency leave day. I'll speak to minimum wage in a minute. Employer benefits, that's principally being driven by health, dental, as well as disability premiums. Government benefits, again, these are the traditional CPP, EI, which are affected by increases in salaries as employees' benefits through collective agreements and merit increases, government benefits are impacted. Over time, over time, we're forecasting an increase of about $600,000. And again, in part, it is our legislative requirements as well as contractual changes. Operating impacts from capital, I spoke to the operating impacts from capital, and this is principally the additional staff required to support the additional assets or capital projects. And again, it's principally the Scott Park Precinct Recreation and Senior Center. Omers. Omers, you're seeing a slight reduction in omers. It's not the contribution rate that is reducing. What we're seeing is as some of our workforce, our mature workforce move on to their next stage, which is retirement, their successors are being introduced at a lower compensation. Lower compensation means a lower contribution in terms of omers. So that is what's affecting our overall omers. As well as some other pressures, $1.3 million, you'll see the pension deficiency. You'll recall, we have three legacy pensions, the one being the Hamilton Wentworth Regional. We have a requirement, a deficiency of about $1.3 million going into 2018. And you'll see at the bottom, the reference to fund from reserve. What we are expecting is that contribution will actually decrease in 2019. So rather than increase the budget in '18, just to reduce it in '19, we're suggesting funding that $1.3 million from reserves for 2018. So moving on, one of the other issues that was... So moving on, one of the other issues that was referred to staff to report back on, and we did in 2017, was gapping. Gapping relates to employee-related expenses that result in savings due to vacancies. So when someone is off on a maternity leave, a leave, or the position is simply vacant because someone has chosen to pursue other interests, and that gap, that time between recruiting a successor, that represents savings. What you're going to see in the budget presentations, and it's going to be in the departmental budget presentations, and specifically in the GM's offices. That gapping savings of $4.5 million at the request of council has now been distributed to the departments. Each department now has a target to achieve, and that target is represented in the GM's offices. It will be the general managers. We are accountable now for that target. And so we will be working with our leadership teams in order to achieve that target, and we'll be reporting in year with respect to our progress towards those targets. So I just want to highlight, you will see in the departmental presentations and within the GM's office, a pressure, and that pressure principally relates to the gapping. So with respect to boards and agencies, I'm going to approach this slide from the bottom and work up, because I expect there'll be some questions towards the top of this table. So with respect to City Enrichment Fund, we're not forecasting any amendments for 2018. Hamilton Public Library, the board has approved a increase of 1.8%. What you'll see in the complement report, in the publication, is Hamilton Public Library is reducing complement by one, as well as I expect part of their pressures includes the legislative changes around minimum wage. Hamilton Police Services, their board approved a 2.45%. What we don't have in the complement reports, it was a timing issue, there's some additional complement that was approved as part of that budget, so I expect that will come before committee through the boards and presentation, boards and agencies presentations starting next week. Hamilton, or sorry, Royal Botanical Gardens, their boards approved an increase of 1.5%. Hamilton Share is just greater than $9,000. Hamilton Farber's Market are forecasting, are recommending a decrease of just about 5%, which represents about $5,500. With respect to Hamilton Beach Rescue, they've achieved council's target of 1.5%. And MPAK, our MPAK contractual obligation is increasing by 2.6%. Just a reminder, our MPAK obligation is based on our portion of the assessment within the province of Ontario, as well as households, and that's factored into their overall budget. So again, that is increasing by 2.6%, or about $170,000. Now with respect to the Conservation Authorities, what we have reflected in the budget documents, what's before you in terms of this slide, is that the historical relationship as it relates to Hamilton's apportionment and levy, and I know we have a, I'll just remind committee, we have an in-camera report today regarding the most recent decision as it relates to our MPCA appeal, and so that will be form part of our deliberations discussion today. So based on historical apportionment, as well as their revised levies, Niagara Peninsula were showing a 1.5% increase. Hamilton Conservation Authority, a 1.8%, or approximately, just short of $78,000. Halton Region Conservation Authority, 3.5%, $7,000. And GRCA, Grand River Conservation Authority, 3.1%, or approximately $8,000. So where are we today with respect to the decision? The Mining and Lands Commissioner, I can advise committee that I've had conversations with staff representatives, both of GRCA and Halton Conservation Authority. They are reviewing the decision. In the case of Halton Conservation Authority, they have sought a outside legal opinion with respect to their decision. What I expect they will be presenting to committee next week, they've suggested to me, is a realignment of the apportionments based on the regulation, which was the approach that Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority took towards the city of Hamilton back in 2015. So what will that represent in terms of their ask to the city of Hamilton for 2018? That would represent an increase in the net preliminary Conservation Authority budgets of about $2.4 million. So it would increase from the 5.4, an additional $2.4 million. How does that break down? MPCA would represent about $850,000 of that $2.4 million. Halton Conservation Authority, about $450,000. Grand River Conservation Authority, about $1.1 million. If Hamilton Conservation Authority takes that same approach, we'll see relief of about $13,000, which will be transferred over to Puss Lynch. So in terms of what I expect the Conservation Authorities will be presenting, is that revised apportionment. We need to better understand the nuances. For example, Halton Conservation Authority approved their budget. They approved their budget, I believe, earlier in 2017, as in November, or somewhere around that period. There's an appeal process for all parties, a 30-day appeal process. That levy was not appealed. Having said that, they've sought a legal opinion with respect to their obligation to revise the apportionment. So I expect they will present a potential amendment to Hamilton's apportionment and our levy, and that would be an amendment increasing the Hamilton levy to about $450,000. Just a reminder for the benefit of committee, as well as the benefit of Hamilton residents, this doesn't represent additional funding to Conservation Authorities. This just redistributes the burden. So in the case of the three Conservation Authorities, the net impact would be zero to them. The impact would be those other municipalities or parties who contribute to their overall budget, they would see relief. So if I use Grand River Conservation Authority as an example, I think there are 20 parties to that levy. There are 20 municipalities, townships, 20 municipalities who contribute to those. The largest recipient, if this shift, if council were to approve the decision, and we were to proceed with the revised apportionment, again, as it relates to Grand River Conservation Authority, just as an example of the shifts, Hamilton would contribute additional $1.1 million, and Region of Waterloo would see relief, I believe, of about $1.5 million. So just to illustrate, in an effort to try to illustrate for committee and for the citizens, that this does not represent additional funding for Conservation Authorities as it relates to their programming, what this represents is a shift in burden amongst the various parties who contribute or fund the Conservation Authorities. So moving on, and again, with respect to the MPCA appeal, we did receive over the holidays, late December, the ruling from the Commissioner of Mining and Lands. As I've mentioned, the potential impact is approximately $2.4 million. And finally, we do have a private and confidential report on our agenda today to discuss next So with respect to complement changes, I just want to take committee through some of the changes that are before you with respect to the overall complement. We're starting 2018 based on our restated 2017, so end of 2017. These are just city departments, excludes boards and agencies. We have an approved complement, or a restated complement of approximately 5,700. I mentioned previously, the operating impacts from capital. We have 40 capital projects that are being introduced in 2018. The most significant as it relates to operating impacts is the Scott Park Precinct. You can see those 40 projects represent approximately 22.5 additional FTEs. Just the Scott Park Precinct project represents about 18.5 of those 22.5 FTEs. Staff have put forward reductions in FTEs, and I'll try to categorize those reductions. Those reductions represent about 35. The most significant of those reductions, 24, were the contingency as it relates to Ontario Works caseload workers. You'll recall, as a outcome of the 2008, 2009 recession, council approved a contingency of Ontario Works caseload workers. Of that 35, approximately 24 represent a reduction in Ontario Works contingency caseload workers. Over and above those 24, there are some reductions in licensing and bylaw, approximately three FTEs. Within public health, communicable disease, 3.9. Healthy environments, 1.7. And healthy families, 1.3. You will see in the public health reductions, in some of the cases, pilot projects are coming to an end, as well as grants or funding from external parties, including the province, is expiring. And for that reason, those FTE are being recommended to be reduced. So just as some way to describe, the 35.2 FTEs principally related to the Ontario contingency caseload workers, and some further reductions in the other departments, including audit services, one FTE where a pilot is coming to an end. So offsetting the 35.2 FTE reduction, again, is the operating impacts from capital above, as well as 29 FTEs required for year three of the transit strategy. I mentioned previously, out of those 29 FTEs, 26 are operators to support the additional buses, rolling stock, that are being introduced as part of year three of the transit strategy. So controlling for the 29 FTEs, you can see, when you net off the transit strategy to the reductions, there is still a reduction in complement of approximately six going into 2018. And then when you factor in the capital impacts, the overall increase is 16 FTE. So I just wanted to take a moment to take you through the complement report. Again, what this does not capture is the boards and agencies, the reduction in the public library of one, as well as the additional FTE being recommended by Hamilton Police So I've spoken to assessment growth, I introduced it a little earlier. We are still forecasting net assessment growth of 1%, irrespective of our challenges with respect to the change in valuation for Stelco. We are facing some significant challenges with respect to assessment appeals, and I'll speak to that in a second. The other, what I also want to highlight, is you'll recall, in 2017, council approved deeming city housing facilities as municipal capital facilities. And we did that to reduce and benefit from the education portion of the property taxes. And so what you will see further described, defined in the budget document, is we're trying to control for that impact. So you'll have to appreciate, there's two sides to that transaction. One is, when you deem the municipal capital facilities, that now represents a reduction in our assessed value, because each of those facilities had assessment. So what we're trying to do is, try to control for that. If we weren't controlling for that in terms of how we present the budget to you, I would be reporting a reduction in assessment of 0.6%, which doesn't necessarily represent our actual experience. What's driving that is deeming our city housing stock as municipal capital facility. So again, the benefit of that was additional funding for housing services as it relates to what was previously our education portion of the property tax burden. So I just want to introduce that to you as well. That is further described in the introduction section of the budget documents as well. I should have mentioned previously, the budget documents are posted on the city's website, as is this presentation. So citizens can access those, the documents, as well as get a better appreciation for this particular issue. So again, with respect to last bullet point, we continue to have some challenges as it relates to assessment appeals, and that is principally in our non-residential sector. So to give you some sense of the challenge, in 2017, we have 897 appeals, assessment appeals. These are principally in the commercial and industrial area. In the commercial sector, we have 313 appeals filed in 2017. What we're seeing is, the most significant of those appeals are large shopping malls, centers. So Lymeridge has appealed, Lymeridge Mall has an assessed value of $337 million. Center Mall has appealed, it has an assessed value of $123 million. East Gate Square has appealed, they have an assessed value of $108 million. Virtually every mall and office building have appealed their 2017 assessments. So beyond commercial industrial, we have 166 industrial appeals for 2017. The four main appeals, Arser Matel de Vasco, an assessed value of $92 million. US Steel, that while MPAK has changed the valuation for 2018, the 2017 appeal hasn't been settled. US Steel, you'll recall, assessed value of $86 million. Mondelez International, better known as Cadbury, has appealed, an assessed value of $31 million. Canada Bread has appealed, an assessed value of $28 million. So I just want to give council some sense of the headwinds we continue to face as it relates to our non-residential assessment base. I spoke previously to residential property values increasing at a rate of value greater than non-residential, that's contributing a half percent. We're reporting 1% assessment growth. We likely would have reported 1.4, 1.5%. We're in offer the successful assessment appeals, and we continue to face some uncertainty as it relates to our non-residential assessment appeals. So I mentioned two shifts to residential. One was a shift across the classes, the other shift is across wards. You'll recall this from last year, we're in year two of the four-year reassessment period. Wards experience different outcomes as it relates to the reassessment, but effectively similar to last year. While we're at 2.3% as it relates to potential residential tax increase, it will vary across wards, principally because of reassessment. And so some wards, based on that 2.3, would have a overall levy, or sorry, tax impact of 1.4% because they've received some relief. As it relates to reassessment, others will see some additional pressures or increases owned above the 2.3, being their potential tax increase to 4.1%. That's averages, again, each property will be different, again, based on the experience of those properties as it relates to reassessment. So again, just to quickly go through the lists, give each of you some indication as it relates to your respective wards, and these are 2017, I would expect somewhat similar impacts in 2018. Ward one, the reassessment impact was 2.3%. Ward two, 2.2. Ward three, 2.2. Ward four, 0.6. Ward five, relief of 0.1, so negative 0.1. Ward six, 0. Ward seven, 0.4. Ward eight, 0.1. Ward nine, negative 0.1. Ward 10, 0. Ward 11, negative 0.8. Ward 12, negative 0.5. Ward 13, negative 0.5. Ward 14- Ward fourteen, negative two point one. And ward fifteen, negative one. So again, just highlighting the various impacts that are going to affect the overall residential tax increase. So council referred items. Again, the intention for today was not to go through these in detail. Just a reminder, there were five council referred items, which represent a potential net impact of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, as well as one FTE. If all approved, it would have an impact, tax impact of point zero four percent. In terms of those five, again, they're before you today. Some money being recommended as it relates to supporting the music strategy, as well as a transition as it relates to the tourism strategy, why you see it as a negative, or sorry, as a zero net impact in 2018. Staff are recommending funding it in 2018 as a one-time from the Economic Development Reserve and bringing it forward in 2019, as a through a business case in 2019. Some equalization of horticultural services. You've referred this back to the budget process, and this was providing some uniformity in the horticultural services being provided to the BIAs. That represents an additional two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars and one FTE. The transportation parks, this is taking the tobogganing, the Four Hills, that is a pilot project and making them permanent. That would represent additional one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Corporate financials. So I'm going to pause here for a second, because this creates an opportunity, and we will need some direction through the 2008 budget process as it relates to this opportunity. So this relates to, you recall that council approved phasing out the commercial vacancy rebate. The first year of the two-year phase-out will represent as a reduction or potential savings of one point two five million dollars. What council referred to the budget process is three options. The options were to apply the one point two five million dollars to reduce the 2018 levy. If you were to do so, that would reduce our two point three down to two point one. It would be a reduction of point two percent. The second option you referred is to apply the one point two five million dollars to create a citywide affordable housing incentive program. And the final option that you referred to the budget process was to apply the one point two five million dollars to other priorities that are directed by council. So a more open-ended opportunity to invest the one point two five million dollars. So I just remind you, it's it's actually an opportunity. It is a potential savings or opportunity to reinvest over and above the two point three million dollars, and we will need some direction through the 2018 budget process. I mentioned previously is part of the budget documents in support of the business plan are business cases, previously referred to it as enhancements. There are eight business cases that will be brought forward for your consideration through the budget process. If all eight were approved, it would represent an increase in the net levy of approximately nine hundred and seventy-five thousand and would require an additional twenty-one point three FTEs. The nine hundred and seventy-four thousand would represent an additional point one percent. And as in the previous slides, is all this information is contained both in the publication as well as on the website. So in terms of of the nature of the business cases, and I won't go through them all, but there are some changes being proposed as it relates to enhancements around full-time zoning, examiner code, correlator positions, some potential student enhancements as it relates to the waterfalls, as well as some supports as it relates to the raccoon rabies response, paramedic services. You'll recall you approved a transition of additional ambulance and the paramedics. So that was a short-term transition, and what will be before you is making that permanent through the 2008 budget process. Some additional resources being sought in support of AMPIPA through the city clerk's office, as well as some directed, these are results coming out of audits, from internal audits, some additional oversight as it relates to city procurement and contract management. Continuing on, some additional resources for Provincial Fences Act. And finally, with respect to risk management, you'll recall and report, you may recall a report from audit suggesting some change. Staff are recommending that change. It has neither an impact on the gross budget, net budget, that that change actually reduces, creates some savings that would fund an FTE. So again, these will all be brought before you for further discussion in the coming weeks. Some additional information, budget process, where do we sit relative to our comparators? We're currently, again, at two point three percent. This chart will continue to be updated as our comparators continue through their budget processes. This is a snapshot where we were probably just over a week ago. So again, some of this information may be changing as it relates to other municipalities continuing through their budget process. So we are, you can see in terms of our comparator groups, the range is two percent to three percent, and we're towards the lower end of that range, currently at two point three So again, two point three percent represents a levy increase of just short of twenty-three million dollars. If committee and council wanted to achieve a two percent residential tax increase, that would require further reductions of about two and a half million dollars. And to achieve an overall one and a half percent residential tax increase on average, that would represent, that would require an additional six and a half million dollars in reductions. So just in terms of process, next week, committee will be receiving presentations from boards and agencies. Transit Day is scheduled for, or second of two transit days is scheduled for January twenty-sixth. Departmental presentations will be presented from January thirtieth through to February sixteenth. Public delegations is scheduled for February twenty-seventh. And then we have a number of scheduled budget deliberation dates in March, second through to eighth. We have some reports as it relates to assessment reports, growth reports that we'll be presenting to you somewhere in the months of February and March. And currently, we are scheduled for council approval of the 2018 tax-supported operating budget on March twenty-eighth. With, I had my fingers crossed as I was reading that last bullet. So in addition to the the presentations, in addition to any reports that may arise from those presentations, is there is a list of of reports that council has asked historically for, and those once again are posted on the S drive. So you'll have access to those reports. Those are traditionally account reports, whether it's consulting, overtime, temp, all of those summary reports. What it does is provide you some some numerical information as it relates to those reports. Again, any request for information, staff will be responding to those requests through the budget process. And again, that information will be brought forward through GIC or posted onto our S drive. So again, another change is a multi-year budget. You'll recall council approved the introduction of a four-year rolling, multi-year forecast. And so in addition to 2018, I have a short presentation with respect to the 2019 to twenty-one forecast. So again, just in terms of the direction was through the 2018 budget process to implement a multi-year budget process. Again, this is early stages to a multi-year budget. So what you will see is a summary, some highlights of pressures. It's not presented in the same level of detail as the 2018 budget, but it gives you some sense of what staff are forecasting as it relates to the next three years. So in terms of salary, wages, compensation, we've had to make some assumptions. We looked at the historical, recognizing that a good number of our contractual obligations will expire at the end of 2018 and need to be negotiated in 2019. We've simply used the historical experience, which was two percent. We're not making any recommendations or suggestions. We're just using that assumption based on historical experience. Employer benefits, we expect that to range from two to ten percent across the variety of employer benefits. Government benefits, we know of increases because of changes to CPP. The CPP rates will be increasing, starting, I believe, in 2019. So that will impact our forecast going forward. Omer's, we're not assuming any contribution rate change for that for that three-year period. Utilities, that's fuel, natural gas, electricity, and water. We're assuming a five percent annual increase as it relates to utility fees, user fees, based on council's previous guideline of two percent. We've made that assumption for 2019 to twenty-one, and we're assuming, again, net assessment growth of one percent. So that one percent seems, net assessment growth of one percent seems relatively reasonable. If I just take our recent positive announcement with respect to building permits for 2017, we've done a preliminary assessment of what that may translate into in terms of future assessment and tax benefits. So recognizing when you take a building permit out in 2017, until such time as there's occupancy, that's not captured by MPAC, and that doesn't affect our tax roll. So we would expect a a building permit in 2017 residential may affect us in eighteen, nineteen. Non-residential will likely not affect us until 2020, probably eighteen months to twenty-four months in construction. And then there's a lag between MPAC picking it up, and so it would affect our rolls likely in 2020. So if we take the most recent building permit announcement, we expect from that a preliminary assessment is that will translate into about a nine million to fourteen million dollar tax impact. So that represents about a one point one percent to a one point four, one point five percent assessment benefit. Now what will offset that is any successful appeals on assessment. So again, we're assuming that a net assessment growth benefit of one percent for each of the years nineteen, nineteen, sorry, 2019 to 2021 is reasonable. So just some indication of what the departments are forecasting as it relates to issues, pressures, and it could be legislative pressures, contractual pressures, inflationary pressures, including employee-related expenses, is planning and economic development. You can see while they're at one point five percent for 2018, their preliminary forecast for multi-year ranges from two point seven in 2021 to six point four percent in 2019. Public health, you can see significantly higher than 2018, one point four. What's affecting public health in their forecast is that the province is not committing to an increase in their in their cost sharing as it relates to public health. And so we're being conservative in the assumption that similar to 2018 is that the province will not be increasing their cost-sharing contribution. And so that's why you can see that range of six point eight percent to nine, nine point six percent. Community emergency services, again, 2018 is the last year of the Ontario Works upload benefit. So we don't expect to see that negative net levy for community, sorry, what we're still calling, just because of the timing of the budget documents, community emergency services. So you can see that range of one point nine percent to three point one percent for the next three years. Public works, similar to 2018, ranging from two point two percent to three point eight percent. Again, what's affecting public works in the first two years is the transit strategy. As we continue to evolve and implement the transit strategy, that is one of the factors affecting public works, as well as some pressures as it relates to waste management. There are some pressures as it relates to recyclables, as well as the waste collection contracts. Legislative in that range of two point two percent to three point two percent. City manager in that two point seven to three and a half percent. Corporate services at three point three to four point seven percent. And our corporate financials ranging from seven point eight percent to seventeen percent. And our entertainment facilities, you can see right around that two and a half percent range. So in terms of total city expenditures, you can see in our forecast ranging from two point nine to four point seven, recognizing our ability to forecast one year out is much better than our ability to forecast out to 2021. So I expect these will continue to be revised and changed as we're better informed as to what will be affecting us over this time time horizon. With respect to the boards and agencies, again, police services somewhere in that one point nine, and this is again, Hamilton Police Services as well approved a multi-year budget process. So again, these are figures provided to us by Hamilton Police Services, one point nine percent to two point two percent. Other boards and agencies, we're assuming one point six to two point one. City enrichment fund, right now, we have no indication, so we're assuming the zero percent for city enrichment fund. And you can see the capital financing, again, we're assuming a half percent in the years nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. And so the total levy requirement is ranging from two point seven to four percent, and municipal taxes from two point three percent to three point six. Again, a preliminary forecast, this is our first year, that multi-year will continue to improve, evolve at our forecast, but building off of that, just some some sense as to what's affecting those figures. Again, we made assumptions with respect to a two percent negotiated outcome with respect to our collective agreements, as well as other employee-related costs, both employer or employee benefits. And that represents with respect to employee-related costs ranging from eleven point nine to eighteen and a half million. What you are seeing, I believe, in the 2020 is, I mentioned previously, one of those legacy pension funds, the Hamilton Wentworth Regional Fund, and the reduction in the contribution in that fund, I believe, is affecting our 2020 forecast. Other inflationary contractual, you can see ranging from three point three to eight point nine. Our utility expenses to continue to operate our facilities, to operate our fleets and deliver our services from one point six to two point one. Operating impacts from capital, so again, we have a better sense that those historically approved, previously approved capital projects, how they'll impact us in 2019, some uncertainty with 2020, 2021. So I'd expect that to to change as we continue to move forward with future capital projects. So again, when you approve a new facility or an expansion to a facility, there are additional operating costs, both in utilities and sometimes in staffing. And user fees is a is a reduction. So again, we're assuming two percent on the most part of our user fees. I believe traditionally we tried to control for golf, hockey, and transit. So in terms of significant departmental pressures, transit strategy is, we're forecasting an additional two point five in 2019 and one point two in 2020. Various contractual pressures within public works, again, waste management and recyclables are two principal factors. Our DRT's contractual, so again, both inflationary contractual, AODA and ridership impacts, Presto, you heard, or through public works, those councils who sit on public works, you would have heard an update with respect to some Presto operating future impacts, as well as some historical changes in terms of our budgeting process as it relates to transit, rolling stock, stock as the province got out of contributing directly for rolling stock, the Ontario Bus Replacement Program, we've had to mitigate that, and you can see the impact of mitigating that as an additional half million in each of the years 2019 and 2020. I did mention, or maybe I glanced over, and I apologize, employee-related. As part of the employee, I won't go all the way back, I'll just speak to it verbally. As part of Bill 148, the minimum wage, we are expecting a four hundred thousand dollar pressure in 2018. So that is, you'll recall the minimum wage legislation, it's phased in over two years. So we're forecasting four hundred thousand dollars for city departments, that excludes conservation authorities or library. library, followed by an additional $900,000 in 2019. So again, $400,000 in 2018 and $900,000 in 2019. So again, there may be additional pressures as it relates to Bill 148, as we better appreciate and understand all of the variables as it relates to that legislative change. Planning and economic development, mainly pressures related to employee costs, property taxes assessment for parking lots is a factor, and that's partially offset by some potential additional revenues. Community emergency services, social housing, federal funding, they're identifying as a pressure of 1.7 million, a slight reduction in '20, and additional pressure of $1.2 million in 2021. Social housing provincial benchmark, so again, this is the inflationary pressures as it relates to social housing. That represents an additional $200,000 to $400,000 annually over this period. Transfer to vehicle and equipment reserve, and this is principally fire, approximately half a million dollars. Employee-related cost pressures of an additional half million in 2019. Some provincial subsidies providing some relief in each of the years over a three-year period, and some of the mortgage, mortgage of the ventures for social housing expire, that'll provide some relief for savings. Public health, some pressures principally due to employee-related costs. And again, we're making some assumptions with respect to the cost sharing with the province as it relates to public health. So those higher-than-inflationary increases that are forecast for public health reflect staying in provincial subsidies that we're forecasting for each of the years 19, 2019 to 2021. Corporate services, city manager legislative, we are forecasting principally employee-related pressures over that period, some risks, some unknowns. This is my caveat to the forecast is, again, it is a forecast, there are some potential pressures that are unknown. Labor-related assumptions, again, we've assumed historical, that'll be subject to whatever is negotiated or any decisions, arbitrated decisions, arbitration decisions that will affect us going forward. I believe that local 288s, we're still waiting for the 2016 and '17 impacts. And so going forward, we expect some potential arbitration impacts as well in the period 2019 to '21. Various subsidies, we've made some assumptions, some unknowns with respect to where the provincial government, what direction they may take with respect to cost sharing and subsidies. And again, the intent is to give committee and council, as well as our constituents, some sense of the challenges we're facing in the years 2019 and '21. And again, this is our first year, it's evolving into multi-year budgets, and I expect we'll continue to fine-tune these forecasts going forward. That represents the end of my presentation, and I'd be happy to take any questions. And again, we do have some staff members here. And again, some of that content with respect to the business cases and the council referred will be before you, as will the boards and agencies and departmental. The purpose for today was just to give you an overview of the documents that you would have received in December. So again, through you, Mr. Chair, if committee has any questions of staff, we'd be happy to try to answer those.
Comprehensive as always. Thank you, Mr. Zegarek. We go first to councillor Whitehead.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Chris May started the introduction and he sort of gave an overview and talked about, I mentioned, community diversity. Going into the next election and understanding that we have many boards and agencies that we fulfill with citizens. And as my experience for the last 14 years dealing with the selection committee, I would hope, and maybe it's direction and maybe the work for staff, but especially even on police board applicants, the diversity of applicants is sadly lacking. And relying on a reactive approach, meaning you just put out the advertising, people advertise, I don't know if we need to be looking at reaching out to all these different communities to encourage them and expose them to the opportunity to sit on many of the various boards and agencies of the city, so that hopefully we can get a more diverse approach to applications and the processes. I love, in the next term, whether I'm here or not, to really see something that's more reflective of this community in the application, especially for some of the key type of boards and agencies. So I'm just dovetailing that comment based on a comment that Chris made just before you made the presentation. I was looking for some clarification on slide 18. So you referred to the fact that there's the impact. So basically by exempting, that means there's no, they're not paying taxes on those facilities. Is that correct?
Yeah. So through you, Mr. Chair, that's correct. So in effect, to, by deeming them municipal capital facilities and making them municipal and education property tax exempt, the other side of the equation is we have to net that assessment off of our total assessment base. So the fact that we are no longer levying those properties, that means that assessment is not available to be leveled.
So is there a shell exercise going on here, or what is the cost differential between those, that exercise?
So the impact, I'm going to look to see in my notes because I thought, and I might have to turn to staff, I thought it was... Sorry, I'm going to turn to, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. In order to get a actual number, I'm going to turn to staff in terms of what, and it is the provincial education benefits that this number will capture, represent.
Yeah, so through the chair, it's $850,000?
So again, the benefit of $850,000 accrued to social housing. And so social housing saw that benefit of $850,000 specific to municipal, to City Housing Hamilton. So that would have flown, I'm just identifying the relationship between social housing and City Housing Hamilton. City Housing Hamilton would have been the ultimate recipient of that benefit. So again...
I'm trying to understand the cost differentials. So I mean, you know, we can have two cups and shift the cost impacts, but if the cost impact of the loss of assessment is equivalent to the $850,000 benefit, then all we did is basically shift that burden on the broader community. And I never thought that was the principle that we were espousing.
So again, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and again, this is further explained in the budget documents, is there isn't a levy pressure as a result of it. The intent of this was to exempt them from municipal taxes, and while City Housing Hamilton was paying in the provincial education taxes, they are no longer paying. And that differential is now a benefit to City Housing Hamilton. But in order to balance in terms of the municipal taxes, so while they are no longer paying the municipal taxes, I can't assume those municipal tax benefits. So we had to net that off. So City Housing Hamilton is showing a savings on the municipal tax portion, but I am showing a reduction in taxation related to the municipal portion. The differential is the provincial education. That's our benefit.
I understand. What I'm trying to understand in the context of the mechanics is that, you know, you talk about the impacts of STALCO and all these assessments in respect to our 1% growth in assessment and so forth. So I'm trying to understand when you look at that next bullet, without the restatement, the assessment growth would be decreased by 0.6%. So if you take the housing piece out and you're dropping your total assessment by 0.6%, that has a broad impact to the broader community, does it not?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that's what we're trying to control for. So we controlled for it in terms of taxation. What we've done is City Housing Hamilton adjusted their budget as it relates to the municipal taxation portion, and we reduced what we were forecasting in terms of tax benefit from City Housing Hamilton. What we're highlighting, if someone were, if we didn't just do this little nuance in terms of restating it, we would be showing negative assessment growth of 0.6% by reducing the assessment related to those City Housing Hamilton. And we've taken some effort to describe that in our budget documents, just in case there's questions with respect to the mechanics.
For the purposes of anyone watching live stream, or for us to explain to the community, this isn't just the shifting of cups. This is not going to have a net impact, actually probably a net benefit, but not a net negative impact on the broader community with that loss of assessment that City Housing provides within the...
Right. Yeah. So through you, through you, Mr. Chair, is the intent is to give you a better, a true sense of our assessment growth. If we didn't control for this, we would be reporting negative assessment growth, which really doesn't truly reflect. It's just, we're trying to control for the City Housing Hamilton portion.
So the next question, well, and comment, was the conservation authorities. And I want to thank councillor Collins, send the map. I thought there was a buffer between Grand River and Hamilton Conservation Authority, therefore protecting us, but clearly there's overlap. You know, and I guess my challenge is as a result of amalgamation, they didn't have access to the larger assessment in regards to conservation because certainly City of Hamilton, where your largest assessment piece is, was not required to provide any contribution to any of those areas because we're well outside of those areas. Because we have enclaves of small communities or even agricultural, all of a sudden because of that, they now are able to link into that larger urban assessment of the City of Hamilton. Am I describing that correct?
So through the chair, the councillor's absolutely correct. This really is a potential outcome as it relates to amalgamation in the sense that those previous, the prior municipalities who would have imparted, their geographic area would have imparted, included the four conservation authorities, or one of those four conservation authorities. So if I use, MPCA is an example, their watershed would have captured part of Ancaster and Stony Creek and Glambrook. And their portion, those former municipalities, their apportionment would have been based on the assessment within those three former municipalities as a result of amalgamation. And by applying the regulation directly is now the conservation authorities would be able to leverage the total assessment base in the new City of Hamilton and not simply the assessment base within their portion of the watersheds. So it...
It's an unfortunate formula because really, when you look at it, the pre-existing boundaries dictated the amount, and then because, from a governance point of view, that's changed. They're now able to tap into an urban area that's quite far and distant from the activities of those particular conservation authorities. So it concerns me that maybe that formula needs to be revisited because Waterloo, Halton and Niagara are the significant benefactors of the amalgamation as it results in now the burden being put on the backs of City of Hamilton taxpayers.
Yeah. And I would simply add through the chair, while, you know, we're very focused right today, this afternoon, on the regulation, is what governs the regulation is the Act. The Act further expands on how that regulation is written, in that it does make reference to watersheds and assessment within watersheds. So I don't want to leave people with the impression that it's the regulation. Really, individuals need to look at the Act in terms of how to apply the apportionment.
Well, I think, you know, I've already made my statement, but when you've got larger urban centers, abutting the, more directly, those geographic areas, but they pay, and they spend no more than a community like Hamilton that might be even greater distant in regards to the larger urban area, disproportionately, it seems that we're offsetting their bill. That's my take on it, and people can arrive at their own conclusions. But I guess what concerns me then is, but for example, Halton being the outlier in the sense that they have continued, continued year in and year out, coming in well above, well, well above the targeted numbers that we present to our boards and agencies. Now, that was based on a 290, well, this year, I guess, is $290,000 contribution. And as much as it's problematic, the percentage, the actual number isn't that significant. But with this new proposal, we're now looking at $400,000 and some odd thousand, which means that a 3.5% increase would proportionally mean a lot more money being asked of the city. So I want to highlight that because the issue for me is how is it, for example, the Hamilton Conservation Authority, which I believe is doing a great job, continue coming in at close to, or if not under, the targeted budget, but continually with no control, Halton comes in much higher. And much higher, when you're only at, you know, $200,000 is okay, I guess, but when you start now saying it's $400,000 or $500,000, then obviously that number goes up exponentially. So help me understand how we can, I guess there's no ability to control. I guess it's more rhetorical.
So I think, so through the chair, I think the last comment is the most relevant comment for...
Or question.
Colleagues, please, a bit of order. Councillor Whitehead has not violated any rules yet. Well, and actually, just to confirm, all we voted to do was enforce our status quo rule, and councillor Whitehead has not yet violated the status quo rule, though I am watching and waiting.
Wow. I mean, I know some people like to get out to have a beer, but I'm one of those ones that want to work hard here in the horseshoe, so I will continue asking the questions that are important to my residents. So...
So through the chair, just in terms of the last comment that councillor Whitehead made, it's very relevant, just as a reminder to committee leading into boards and agency presentations next week, is that municipalities cannot appeal the levy. What you can appeal is the apportionment. So again, the board puts forward a levy, it's approved by the board, the Conservation Authority Board. You cannot appeal the levy, the amount of the levy or the increase, what you can appeal is the apportionment. So I just want to identify that, I think that's what the councillor was alluding to, and it's very timely and relevant given that they'll be presenting to committee.
I just want you to start developing a strategy around that. 24, I don't know if it was slide 22, 23 or 24. Could you pull those up?
Sorry, through the chair, which...
Hang on, right here, I think.
Forward, back.
So we had a number on the business cases, and then you talked about the $1.2 million possible generation through the financial...
So that is, so through the chair, that is allocation savings as it relates to the vacancy rebate program. So you'll recall the vacancy rebate program, a council approved, was a two-year phase out, the first year being in 2018. That will represent $1.25 million that will be available to committee. And I just made reference to the three options that were referred to the budget process. I could go repeat those again if...
No, I think, there was a question, and I don't know if it was directed to the slide, but I wasn't sure if it was including, was it just a capital or operating cost? For example, when I look at the identified toboggan locations on city property, you put up $110,000, is that an annualized operating cost is what you're suggesting in that slide?
Yeah. So through you, Mr. Chair, these are all operating impacts. So again, these are all operating, the one that isn't identified in terms of a value is the fifth one. And just again, for your benefit, it would be a savings, operating savings of about $1.25 million.
Now, on the last question was on the forecast. You had in 2019, obviously, a 4.7% impact, and some of us around this table remember coming in, well, I certainly came in at, when we started, 13% increases and came in at 5%. So clearly, some of the decisions and policies that we've decided on in this council and the last council has helped and facilitated where we are today, so I want to congratulate those and staff. So it does mean if you set the platform today, it does have an impact tomorrow. But in 2019, you're projecting 4.7%. And you identified some of the pressures, so I don't have to go through that, but I'm surprised when I look at, say, your city manager's office at 3.5%. So are you suggesting the pressures you identified automatically has the same proportional impact in every department?
So through you, Mr. Chair, some of our... So through you, Mr. Chair, some of our employee-related will, so subject to the outcomes in terms of our next negotiation on collective agreements, that will typically have the same impact on city departments. If I look at a typical impact, annual impact from collective agreements, government benefits, employer benefits, somewhere in that 2.3% to 2.5% impact, based on our current collective agreement terms. So again, in terms of those impacts, utilities, well, for those departments who are greater consumers of utility, if I look at Public Works, because of the impact of fuel and utilities as it relates to our facilities, our rolling stock, whether it's winter control, they may be greater, they may have a greater, greater impact if those inflationary pressures exceed our assumption of 5%. So, a number of the assumptions should have a similar impact across the departments, our utilities, our collective agreements. What will vary, I mentioned public health as an example. If the province amends their cost sharing and recognizing that they've realigned their cost sharing contributions to municipalities' public health, some are receiving more, some are receiving less. City of Hamilton's not receiving as much of an increase as others. If that continues, that's why you're seeing those values as it relates to public health services. Again, in terms of community emergency services, unless there's some change in provincial policy, if they continue down the road of uploading, for instance, social housing or Ontario Works and Men, you'll recall, Ontario Works and Men is still 50-50 funded provincially, municipally. Those may be opportunities, subject to provincial policy.
And I think on the public health side, as they start unwrapping, unpackaging all the prescribed programs that they've mandated municipalities and now looking for more information and data, you might find a more greater focus by the provincial government that may actually decrease the cost impacts in our community. So, I understand that. But when I look, for example, at Public Works, at 3.8, I say, and the reason, and I'm not picking the city manager, but then I look at the city manager at 3.5, I'm trying to understand how the same pressures apply equally in those two departments.
So again, it's going to, I think in Public Works, the case is, what's affecting Public Works is, like other departments, is the collective agreements. So we're all equally impacted from the outcomes in terms of future negotiations and those outcomes. Waste and recycling is creating some additional pressures in Public Works. But again, if you look at the cost profile for Public Works, is what we'd have to look at, and I haven't had the chance to look at it directly, is there could be, in terms of other pressures, our contributions to reserves. So if they've now achieved a level of sustainability in some of their reserves, just as an example, that wouldn't represent an increase. So we would have to go through it. I haven't had the opportunity of going through all the departments in terms of their assumptions. But again, it will vary according to assumptions. And the intent for this is to provide committee and the community some sense of the horizon in the next three years.
Through the chair, the reason I asked the question, it just struck out, maybe, Public Works, you know, usually a heavier burdened area through employment, service and so forth, was almost at the same level as some of the administrative areas, and it just struck odd to me. The comment, now, my comment is what I don't see, and hopefully we'll be seeing this through the process, and I don't remember through all the slides, you identifying, but I like to spend a focused period of time just on the revenue generating or cost avoidance programs and what they've established over the last year and what we can look forward, what's being worked on moving forward. Because I think that discussion itself, so that's not only all revenue generation or cost avoidance, or the other piece, I think, would be the investments we have and how, and what kind of returns we're getting, because I don't see this discussion really taking place in the format that you presented this. So can we do that?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Chair, that actually typically is reported by me through corporate financials and non-program revenues. So I typically report in terms of our investment performances, either within our department, corporate services, departmental presentation or corporate financials, again, as well as a, we've done a report in 1617 in terms of a variety of initiatives that council approved with expected paybacks or avoided costs or future savings. So we'll bring that information as we have in 201617. We'll bring that forward.
Do you contemplate that would be a macro conversation or be department-specific discussion?
So it traditionally has been provided as a macro.
Okay.
But we would have, if there are questions concerning, as an example, our efforts by the Energy Office as it relates to LED conversions, streetlight conversions, all of those efforts to reduce greenhouse gases, our electricity consumption. I'm sure we can have staff available to speak to.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Councillor Whitehead. We move on to Councillor Farr.
Thank you. Twenty-one minutes and 43 seconds ago, when our first questioner took the microphone, I noticed that your order had changed, Mr. Chair. It like got blown out, and then a new order appeared. So I was third on the first order. So if anybody remembers who was second, I have no problem waiting. Were you second?
I was after you.
You were after me? Is there anybody who remembers?
It was before Tom.
I have three questions through you. Slide 15, Mike. I actually just, I don't know if I heard. Did you say that all of our boards and agencies on slide 15 have already had their boards approve those budgets that we see?
So, through you, Mr. Chair, no, not all of the boards and agencies. So to the best of my ability, I'll recall, the Public Library Board has approved. And so what is before you is what the board is putting before committee and will be next week. So just reminder that the boards and agencies are part of deliberations next week. Hamilton Police Services, we are reflecting the 2.45% that the board approved. Royal Botanical Gardens, again, that is the approved budget. And Hamilton Impact, Hamilton Farmer Market, I'm assuming that's board-approved. I don't know that one specifically if it's board-approved. Beach Rescue, NPAC is, again, that is levy to us, and that represents the notice that we've been provided. Halton Conservation Authority, it's my understanding that the board approved the levy as well as the apportionment. However, they approved it before the decision by the Mining and Lands Commissioner, and so they are revisiting that. Grand River Conservation Authority, they have not approved, the board has not approved their budget. I don't know in the case of Hamilton, maybe a councillor can tell me, Hamilton Conservation Authority, if that's the board-approved. And the Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority, I don't know if that's the final board-approved.
Okay.
But for the most part, what is presented to you this afternoon are the board-approved.
And I can suggest that the farmer's market is bang on as well, so, and it sounds like the Conservation Authority as well. Thank you. I just wanted to confirm, I thought I heard you said all, and obviously you did not.
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Chair, if I said all, I apologize. As I know, there are some that have not been board-approved.
There's works in progress, and then there's even the one you mentioned that had an approval that they're now revisiting. Through you, Chair, slide 18. On the final bullet, I just was curious, if you know, when you say, "Growth continues to be negatively affected by appeals to the non-residential class," you mentioned a lot of commercial and all the malls in town and all of that, but also industrial. And obviously, the one that Councillor Marula shed a lot of light on about a month ago is the Stelco Lands. Have we seen a spike since the NPAC reassessment, where we came back and heard about a dollar an acre from nowhere? Other industrial folks also appealing since? They've heard of such a wonderful deal?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Chair, is the 166 industrial appeals, they would have been appealed prior to NPAC's decision. So again, there's clearly, you know, some support or resources provided to the non-residential that commercial industrial property owners are leveraging. There's a lot of expertise out there in terms of consultants and advisors, appraisers, and so we're seeing that reflected in the number of appeals.
Okay, and then slide 25 is for Jayson. It's a two-part question, which I'm sure he'll have no trouble with. And that's, this is the business case slide still. And the first bullet is the PED Building Permits and Zoning Bylaw Review. And then the business case details are zoning section program enhancement, and the impacts are there. So Jay, what is, can you define what the need is? And because I see building permits in the request, or in this line item anyway, had you already considered that healthy building department or building division reserve to fund some or all of this? Or is it not eligible for funding from that reserve? So what is it, and can the building department reserve, has it been contemplated to help fund it?
Yeah, so through the chair, so it's not eligible to be funded through the building reserve. Although the enhancements would be in the building division, the function that is being enhanced is actually the zoning review. So we actually, in the city, do our zoning review for planning applications out of the building division. That's where all the zoning examiners are housed. So that building reserve can only be used for work associated with building permits and with implementation of the OBC. So if the zoning review is tied to a building permit, those positions already are funded from that reserve. These positions are actually, they were approved about a year and a half ago on a pilot basis to hire three additional zoning examiners to deal with two issues. One was, we were experiencing kind of backlog and how long it was taking us to do zoning reviews for planning applications. So we wanted to put some additional resources in there. We were also hearing from our business community that when they were coming in for the very first initial formal consultations, they wanted to have at that time a preliminary zoning review. And they wanted to have a zoning examiner sitting in that room when they were talking to the planners about what the zoning would be on their site. So we added that as a new service to support our businesses and development community. So what we have found is that that additional service has been very well received. And additionally, those additional zoning examiners have allowed us to make a dent in how long it's taking us to review those planning applications. That'll be part of my departmental presentation in a couple of weeks. So what this enhancement would do is to make those positions that were put in place on a temporary basis permanent.
And then through you, Mr. Chair, just a reminder, this information will come forward at a future GIC. So again, all this information, again, will be presented to you again in further detail in the coming weeks.
I thought we had Councillor Farr.
I indicated on the computer I finished speaking.
All right.
Pressed the button, actually.
So let us go, so, so I will give the floor now to Councillor Johnson.
Thank you. So, sorry, Mike, I need you to go back to slide six. Your first bullet point, 2018 user fees excluding golf fees. My understanding was that when the Green and I argued that golf fees should not be excluded, they should in fact have that 2%. So why is it now still being excluded?
So this slide was your guideline. So that was what was approved as a guideline. In effect, what council approved, the councillor's correct, November 15th, the council and committee approved a 2% increase, the golf fees. You did some amendments with respect to illegal grow operations, and a third amendment, which was to the migrant farm housing fee. So those were the three amendments that arose from the deliberations on the user fees. But again, as a guideline, and just reminding committee what you approved as a guideline.
Okay, so again, I don't understand it since November, and we're still putting excluding golf fees, because I don't want to give the public thinking that golf fees, golf fees have been excluded when in fact they weren't excluded. They're actually part of that 2% increase.
So through the chair, the golf fees are part of the 2% increase. And again, we're just simply identifying that at the time of the guideline, you excluded golf fees, but then during the deliberations of the user fees, you amended that.
Okay, thank you. And whenever you're talking about updated municipal taxes and what the effect it has on a home, you're basing this on, from what I understand from yesterday, $315,000 home, correct? This is the average price?
So through the chair, that's correct. So that is 2017. And once we review, so recognizing that number's going to change for 2018, and we'll be bringing that information to you in February, March, to reflect the second year of the reassessment. So 315, just remember, that was a 2017 number, we're still using until we have the revised 2018.
Perfect, thank you. Can you go to slide 10, please? I know it's been discussed, but I just want to get my head wrapped around this a little bit. So we have city manager and we have corporate financials. My understanding is that there was some rejigging with the departments. So I believe it was legal that came over to corporate financials.
So through the chair, the organizational change that occurred in 2017 was clerks and legal services.
Right.
Transition from city manager to corporate services. Corporate, as well as our contingencies, those are corporate financials. So in terms of, just in terms, and maybe this is where the councillor's going, but if I'm wrong, be happy to answer a question. With respect to that, that change.
Right.
What we do is we restate the budget so that you have a better sense of what is transpiring or what's forecast to transpire in 2018. So as it relates to legal services and city clerks, we would have restated them out of the city manager's 2017 budget and into corporate services so that you really have a sense of what's transpiring in 2018.
Okay, and the corporate financials, non-program revenues. You had for 2017, $24 million change as revenue, I'm assuming. You've restated it now to $21 million because you're realizing all the different impacts that we're having with the tax reviews. So that's where the $3 million comes from, in the, to charge back the $3 million that you thought you were getting as revenue, correct? I'm just doing the bookkeeping.
Yes, so through you, Mr. Chair, there's a number of factors. One of those was gapping within corporate financials. And so as we've identified, we've taken gapping out of corporate financials and put them right into the city departments. But I will be providing a presentation on corporate financials and non-program revenues in the coming weeks.
Okay, thank you. And can you please go to slide 25? Thank you. So when I look at the Raccoon Rabies response, there's no impact on the levy. Is that because we're getting funding from the, either the provincial or the federal government to handle this problem?
So, so through the chair, I believe it is. So I think the, why it is a net zero is it is eligible for transfer funding. But we'll confirm that when we present the business cases.
Thank you. And slide 28, please. I love this chart. Unfortunately for my ward, I have one street, I actually have several streets, where we have City of Hamilton residents on one side, and we have West Lincoln residents on the other side, or Haldeman County on the other side, or Lincoln on the other side. So I've always asked this, where's Haldeman County? Where's West Lincoln? Where's Niagara at the very least? Because that's where three quarters of my ward butts onto. So people talk about area rating, how somebody on the west side of this, this street is paying full, the one on the east side is not. It's no different than when we're butting municipalities. So do we have any figures for Haldeman? And do we have any figures for Niagara, West Lincoln and Lincoln?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I started my presentation appreciating my team.
Yes.
And I can read my notes. Haldeman, West Lincoln, Grimsby, not available at this time.
Thank you, I apologize.
We will update it when it's available. And I apologize that I didn't read my notes. So to my team, thank you for including that.
Sorry, folks, thank you. And I didn't hear that part, I apologize. And also, there's been a media release that Haldeman actually is lowering their water prices. I know Haldeman buys it from City of Hamilton. So do we have any indication, or can we save this for Public Works, or to find out why Haldeman is paying less for their water now, when in fact they're buying it from us and our water rates went up? So do we have any indication how that all happened?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'm not familiar with.
I'll send you the article.
Sure.
I will send you the article. And one last thing is, and I know this is not an enhancement, but I'd really like to put the staff on notice, especially the W staff, and Dan's not here, but I would like to bring it to Public Works, about sidewalk clearing. So that could be an enhancement, I have no idea. I just looked at the map for sidewalk clearing, just in one little village that I have alone, and the stop gapping is ridiculous. It actually looks like it's more work for staff than it really, than it should be, because they have to do one little spot, then they have to stop, do another little spot. they have to do one little spot, then they have to stop, do another little spot. So I was talking with staff about how much it would actually have an impact on every household in the rural, in the urban area if we did sidewalks carte blanche, just how much is it going to be per household, which would help the seniors, it would help the people with disabilities. And so anyways, that's something I'm just putting on notice for this, for this discussion, not for this year, but for next year. Thank you.
So our next speaker is Marula, Councilor Marula.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just with the recent implementation of the minimum wage, which I strongly support, I know there will be an impact on our city. But over and above the direct impact, what I'm curious is to find out is the indirect impact, being from agencies that we fund. So for instance, the RCAs or, no, sorry, the, what's the, RCF, sorry, RCFs or any other third-party agency that submits funding requests into us, obviously their budget's going to increase. Have we been able to assess what the direct and indirect impact will be?
So through the chair, I don't know if Paul wants to initially speak to this, this question.
So through the chair, in terms of an exact number, we don't know that yet, but we are starting to hear the requests come through. And in fact, I know there's going to be a delegation Monday at the Emergency Community Services Committee meeting around this. What's happening is a different approach across ministries to this, quite frankly, where we receive provincial funding. So childcare, for instance, for a number of years, has had wage enhancements and wage stabilization for dealing with issues just like this. In other ministries, there is talk of that, but nothing in place yet. So I think we're, we're hearing it anecdotally in terms of what that dollar figure amounts to. We don't have anything at this stage to say this is what we're looking at, in the same way that Mike's been able to clarify some of the impacts to us. We don't know for some of our transfer payment agencies quite yet.
So through the chair, I would just simply add is, the province has started to announce some funding envelopes that may assist some organizations, some public organizations, as it relates to helping to mitigate some of the effect. My sense is it will not mitigate the total effect as it relates to minimum wage. We're seeing similar questions arise. And in fact, at AFNA, our upcoming AFNA, we have a number of requests from vendors as it relates to their impacts, as it relates to Bill 148. And part of the challenge is going to be, is, you know, this is one, one impact, part of a number of impacts. So as it relates to for-profit private entities, something to keep in mind is the commercial tax rate is decreasing from 11.5% to 10%. So as those entities, those organizations, if they come forward requiring relief as it relates to the minimum wage increase, the question will be, how will the reduction in the commercial tax rate impact them in a positive way? And what is the net impact? So that's part of the challenge in terms of this conversation, is there's been, been a number of changes, legislative changes, and trying to understand beyond the minimum wage, how are all of these changes positively and negatively affecting the cost of both not-for-profit as well as for-profit entities?
When we isolate, through you, Mr. Chairman, when we isolate strictly provincial legislation, we have personal emergency leave and the minimum wage impact, what else is there?
So, so through you, Mr. Chair, HR is preparing a standalone report that is coming in coming weeks around Bill 148, as well as legal and procurement are preparing a report as well, specific to this vendor issue. What we've identified in terms of costs is the personal emergency leave days as well as minimum wage, but there will be other entitlements around leave. So the previous legislation spoke to 12-month leave periods, that's growing now to 18-monthly periods. How organizations calculate compensation for statutory holidays, there is a suite. And I know public, or HR, Human Resources are preparing a report. They presented to senior leadership team just yesterday, and so I would expect that report to come before committee and council in the coming weeks.
And through you, Mr. Chairman, aside from the issue itself, and as I mentioned, I support all of the endeavors. I think it does tie in greatly to improving one's quality of life. The issue, however, again, going back to the discussion surrounding the downloading file, this is, I guess, the poster child of an example of legislation that's presented with no thought or plan of action attached to it, to how municipalities would fund the endeavors. So it's not too dissimilar to what they've done in the past, it's very actually, very similar to what they've done. And I guess, is it in our, in our best interest to have the mayor get ahead of this and council to reach out to the province with respect to a plan of action, with respect to some sort of dialogue? Or is that already being done? Through you, Mr. Chairman.
So through you, Mr. Chair, I'm not aware of a concerted effort. I don't know, AMO may be having conversations with the province representing municipalities. As I mentioned previously, there have been some, some announcements to assist other public entities as it relates to the transition. I'm not aware of a funding announcement to assist municipalities with any direct or indirect impacts. So again, my answer would be, I'm not aware of any concerted effort, but that's not to say that AMO is not having conversations. I'm just not aware if they're.
So on that front, then, I'd like to, at the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman, move a motion accordingly to get ahead of this particular file and ensure that we're at least leading, we're leading the pack in initiating this dialogue, and hopefully having some sort of return on the investment of time and advocating that position.
To you. My screen is gone, Madam Clerk.
Oh, no.
However.
Does that mean motion to approve the budget?
Counselor Collins was next. So without benefit of full technology, Counselor Collins.
Appreciate that.
There it is.
Thank you. Mike, if you can turn back to the MPAC information that you had provided. I just want to go through that again, and just ask if you could reiterate again the, what we should have seen in the form of, and you talked about the city housing reassessment and how we've factored in for that. What we should have seen from an assessment increase compared to what we are seeing as it relates to some of the MPAC changes that we've witnessed over the last year?
So through you, Mr. Chair, sorry, apologize. I thought the council was referring to our contract with MPAC value. So what we've tried to capture on Slide 9 here is that our 2.3% current position reflects a 1% assessment growth. And what that represents is our net assessment growth. We would have, based on our forecast in terms of gross assessment growth, we would have expected 1.4% to 1.5%. Because of assessment appeals, so not just MPAC related, but because of successful assessment appeals, that reduces that number to our current 1%. And that 1% also incorporates the change in valuation for Stelco for 2018. And that would represent, that change in valuation, and I believe it was $44 million, represents a 0.2% in terms of tax impact. So we would have been, had, had MPAC maintained the valuation at the 2017 valuation, we would have been at 2.1%, and we would be reporting 1.2% in that assessment.
Thank you for that. And I think what caught most people by surprise was the number of applications that you referenced earlier that are in appeal. And Counselor Farr asked the question, you know, was that as a result of the Stelco decision and information that's been released publicly? And you stated that all of those appeals, or most of them, would have been put through to MPAC prior to the Stelco situation arising. And I guess it begs the question, why do we see this avalanche of commercial and industrial appeals? You did last year give us an example of Northern Ontario where there was a municipality that had basically, it was comparable for them, that they had their one Stelco in their municipality, different industrial operation, and they undertook a massive appeal and it was almost bankrupting the municipality, and I can't recall the one that you had referenced. But there are clear examples across the province where it's now being used as a tool, not to legitimately fight necessarily a number that they may think is inaccurate, but essentially just to reduce their municipal tax burden and find savings, and it's coming at the expense of municipalities. And so can you, can you give us an update in terms of why that seems to be an increasing trend across the province and here in the city?
So, so through you, Mr. Chair, appreciate the question because I'll, I'll expand a bit on this slide. There are a few other issues that I was silent on that I just want to go back and cover. Is, I would go further to describe it, not just as a tool in terms of the experience, I would suggest there's an industry that exists to, to try to benefit commercial industrial property owners. And that industry are appraisers who are offering up their services in an effort to try to reduce the property tax impact for commercial and industrial property owners. So just as a reminder in terms of, of, you know, this, this challenge that we face in terms of non-residential. So, so we're facing this uncertainty as it relates to MPAC's ability to, to defend their valuations as it relates to commercial industrial properties. So there's an uncertainty, a risk to us, a budgetary, because we need to create some allowance in terms of our ability to retain and preserve that assessment. And as I've referenced, is we're seeing, you know, some concerted efforts in terms of malls, large, large commercial. I would have spoken previously about Big Box, the Big Box Do-It-Yourself, the Home Depots who've successfully appealed across the province, have minutes of settlement, the Lowe's, and we're seeing it now evolve into the retail sector, the big malls, we're seeing it in the industrial. And keep in mind, along with this risk, as it relates to preserving the non-residential assessment base, is in the case of Hamilton, residential property owners in 2017, the four-year phase in, it was a 6.5% residential increase. Commercial, I believe, was an increase of 5%, so less than residential. Industrial actually declined by almost 5%. So by almost 5%. In the case of some of the primary metal sectors, the primary steel sectors, their assessments declined by 25 to 30%, and they're still seeking further assessment relief and tax relief. So in addition to the assessment appeals, the challenge that Hamilton is facing is is commercial is not, assessment values are not keeping pace with residential, industrial on average is declining. And the, the sector that I was silent on, and I apologize for not having identified it during this slide, is the province has capped, protected the multi-residential class once again for 2018. You'll recall, 2017, it was intended to be a transitional, they protected that class, we couldn't pass on the reassessment and levy increase onto that class, and they've once again extended that into 2018. So another headwind, another challenge as we try to deliver on tax competitiveness for residential is beyond what's transpiring in the commercial industrial, is the fact that multi-residential is being protected as a class across the province. Specific to those properties, you'll recall this issue of threshold, City of Hamilton is one of those, or I believe our threshold, our value is 2.6, somewhere in the area, 2.69, somewhere just short of 2.7. Those municipalities greater than 2, those multi-res classes are protected. So once again, for 2018, we will not be able to pass on the reassessment or levy changes onto that class. So that once again transfers over to the residential class.
And so with that increasing trend happening across the province, I know that we went through an MPAC review several years ago, all municipalities and municipal treasurers, your group and others, were lobbying the province to undertake a review and to undertake a fix of the complaints that we were hearing, by and large at that time from the residential class. You know, for people, as an example, who bought a home in a calendar year for X, and it was appraised at something a lot greater than that, and their argument was, well, I bought it that year for X, and wouldn't that then be the value in that year that it was appraised? And so those types of situations would seem to be very obvious. And I think there were 20 some odd recommendations put to the ministry, and they implemented the vast majority of them. But these issues seem to fall outside of those matters that were reviewed in the past. And increasingly, it seems to me, in light of the Stelco situation, in light of the number of appeals that you've referenced in terms of the, the commercial and industrial classes, that the MPAC process and the successful appeals that are coming through those sectors seem to represent one of the greatest threats to our municipal budget process, you know, more, more so than, than some of the cost increases that we're experiencing with, you know, the traditional stuff related to fuel and utilities and those types of things. These, these appeals, the successful appeals are unpredictable and can swing wildly from one calendar year to the next. And so, you know, had you said this to me five years ago, I would have said, you're probably smoking something that isn't legal yet. But we're increasingly, more so, becoming caught in a situation that we have no control over, and we're forced to pass these things along to the residential class. So my question would be, with that preamble, what are we doing apart from participating in a very proactive way with these appeals? What are we doing with the government, the provincial government, and the opposition parties to change, once again, change a broken provincial system that's having a negative impact on not just Hamilton, but other municipalities?
So, so through the chair, I appreciate the question. So it's important to know that, for committee to know, to the council's point, is we are actively trying to participate. It's a significant number of files. And so from time to time, you may see me come before committee and ask for resources, financial resources and supports from external advisors, both legal as well as land advisors, in order for us to participate in those appeals. So just, just in terms of a potential impact we are going to have. So the council is right, there was an ombudsman report with respect to MPAC, MPAC as an organization moved towards delivering on those ombudsman recommendations. You'll recall, I believe in 2016, 17, there was a review of the Assessment Act. This council put forward a resolution with recommendations. They, they've acted, moved on some of those. One opportunity is, it's part of our reports coming forward in February, March, we can bring that back in terms of those recommendations that this council made that, that the province and MPAC have not made a decision to move forward on. So those would be options. And then I don't want to be silent on, on the provincial policy impacts as well. So that the example of the multi-res is a provincial policy decision whereby they are restricting our ability to leverage the multi-residential class moving forward, and that is causing a redistribution onto residential. So, so some of these issues relate to, and as the council identified, you know, it may, our greatest risk is the uncertainty as it relates to all of these appeals and the unknown as to MPAC's resources and ability to defend their valuation. So again, their role is to appraise, assess, and ultimately defend their valuations. If they haven't the resources, or if they're not able to, to effectively defend their valuations, that risk does not lie with MPAC. That risk transfers over to the municipalities who are facing those appeals. So that, that is how the uncertainty and risk arises for the City of Hamilton.
Thanks, Mike. And you and I are dealing with another issue with MPAC in terms of a situation in my ward where, you know, the port continues to build buildings without a building permit, and, you know, we've lost resources there through MPAC. And I will be raising that, I think, at a committee fairly soon in terms of, you know, advising my colleagues the challenges that we're up against in that regard. But there are a number of issues related to MPAC and provincial legislation. And I know we, you know, this becomes a common theme, and it's not to point fingers and try to, you know, find a scapegoat for the financial challenges that we face. I think everyone around this table, including everyone within our bureaucracy, is willing to make tough decisions in order to get us to the budget goal and targets that we've established. established. We've done that for years on end. But it increasingly becomes more difficult to do that when you have one hand tied behind your back. And as you mentioned, we're up against an entire industry of appraisers and real estate folks and others in that field who are getting commissions to simply just file the appeal. And there's not a lot of cost to undertake the appeal. There certainly is to go through hearings and provide evidence. But when there's so much money on the line, they really have nothing to lose through that process but to make those appeals because there's no penalty if they do lose. They've just, they've expended something, and for the most part, even if they find a mediated settlement without a decision, they've, in essence, they've won.
So I would just simply, through the chair, I would simply add to that is, is one of the risks we face is there may be no incentive to come to an early resolution. So as an industry, as an advisor, if my commission is based on a percentage of the outcome, is if I keep this going for multiple years, I'm going to capitalize on multiple years of a change rather than an early resolutions. So that's our observation of staff, is part of our recommendations is to minimize the risk and the uncertainty. Early resolution would be preferred moving forward, requiring early production of material supporting the appeal. So as the councillors identified, it's not necessarily the most efficient process whereby a property owner can simply just appeal without a rationale. So those are some of the changes that have been enacted in a positive way. I don't want to leave the impression that there haven't been any positive changes. What we haven't seen is that immediate transition to more timely decisions that helps us to reduce our risk and uncertainty. But absolutely, you know, I would suggest again, there's an industry out there that are making themselves available to property owners, and there's a potential return to that industry, and property owners maybe aren't paying upfront. If it's contingent on a positive outcome, there's maybe an incentive for that industry to prolong that process.
Thanks for the information, Mike. Appreciate it.
Certainly. Councillor Jackson.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, thank you. With Councillor Collins's excellent line of questioning, I'll presume under the new rules that his 15 minutes would have qualified as an ongoing dialogue, but we'll leave that for next Wednesday at council. General Manager Zagarek, before I get to a few questions, I just hope today I'm not wasting your time or the city manager's time or your staff's time. Thank you for allowing me that statement. Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you, could you go, Mike, to slide 12, please? I've got a few questions and/or requests that if not for today, that you and staff would take under advisement to prepare information that I think would be germane to our debate and future discussions on the 18 budget. One request I have, Mike, is, under DARTs, I'm getting a lot of complaints from users regarding the smaller vans versus the larger vans, the larger buses we used to have that had much more room. So I know that, I believe, Executive Director Mark Mindorf, following council's approval of the new three-year contract, Mr. Deputy Mayor, was trying to find efficiencies and savings, and I think one of them was going to the smaller van. I'm now looking to you today, or General Manager Dan McKinnon, for an answer. But as the budget unfolds, and whenever DARTs may appear, if they, somebody could apprise them to come in with some explanation on the recently purchased smaller vehicles, I don't know about the rest of my colleagues, but I'm hearing from a number of my constituents, the elderly, who are complaining about the smaller vans, the tightness, the difficulty, the inconvenience versus the larger vans, but versus the overall cost, I would appreciate that. Can I leave that with you, Mike, please, and Dan?
So through you, Mr. Chair, I know there was, I believe, a part of the Public Works presentation going back to 2016 that captured some of that transition over to the mixed fleet, and maybe we can revisit that, bring that back and update that information.
Mike, I think you're right, but now that that mixed fleet is unfolding and more constituents, especially seniors, are experiencing what they are, I'm just saying from my office, I'm hearing a number of complaints, and I think recently Councillor Partridge had apprised us from a long-term care facility in Waterdown, a number of complaints as well. Secondly, the LRT and the ONM, that's still forthcoming, Mike, again, not for today, but whatever we approve in the 18 budget, we're sitting right now at 2.1, 2.3, but with the additional pressures, it might be as much as 2.9 currently with the Stelco lands issue and others, the LRT, ONM potentially will be over and above that amount, correct, Mr. Deputy Mayor? Through to Mike?
So through the chair, we have not made any assumptions with respect to any local contribution as it relates to LRT, ONM. But to the councillor's previous, in terms of some of the context to his question, the Stelco change in valuation is reflected in that value. So we have accounted, sorry, we have accounted for the impact of the 2018 change in valuation. I just don't want to leave committee with an impression that that will continue to be a factor going into 2018. The one uncertainty is we have is 2017 appeal. So with respect to going back historically, is there is a historical appeal on 2017. But the 2018 and then moving forward, the change in valuation is reflected in that figure.
So Mike, thank you for clarifying, but I would just leave it with you and you, General Manager Paul Johnson. And I think it's important for my colleagues that the ONM's still forthcoming to this body to determine if ultimately the LRT is going to be built in our city. That amount has not been at all addressed in your presentation today, correct?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay, so I'll leave that with you and Paul as well to take under advisement. Slide 13, please, Mike. Mr. Deputy Mayor, personal emergency leave from the province, the recent wind legislation and minimum wage impact. Mike, I'm sorry if I missed it. Have you already budgeted for that? Have some form of reserve to account for that? Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you.
So through the chair, what we've done is looked at our workforce to try to determine those individuals who might access the personal emergency leave days, which positions would have to be backfilled in order to continue to deliver the service. So based on that analysis, we've estimated the annual impact at $1.26 million. That's at $1.3 million.
Correct.
And so going forward, so again, that would be the annual operating impact is 1.3, so that is captured in the budget forecast.
In your 2.3?
In the 2.3.
Okay.
Over and above that is the minimum wage impact.
Yes.
And again, recognizing that's phased in over two years, it's $400,000 in 2018, an additional $900,000 in 2019.
Okay, Mike, thank you. So that's no longer still an outstanding pressure. You've accommodated that within the 2.3.
So through the chair, I would just caveat it best on our best ability to assume which positions may be impacted.
Okay. Mr. Deputy Mayor, slide 17, Mike, please. Transit strategy. I would hope that, and you mentioned later on about the process unfolding on page 30, about a transit day in brackets if required. I would hope we're definitely going to have a transit day since the transit strategy and budget is one of the pressures that we're dealing with in spite of our support to enhance transit in our conventional transit, public transit in our city. But I guess my point, Mike, again to you and to General Manager McKinnon and our new HSR director, I would hope that in light of cancellations, in light of some of the challenges with the HSR, with routes, running times, et cetera, that this 29 additional bodies, Mr. Deputy Mayor, there'd be some report back during this budget process on the hires, the implementation of the hires, has it affected positively the less number of cancellations? I think you understand the gist, Mike, of what I'm asking, and I just didn't want to lose that on the radar. And on slide 30, saying transit day if required, I would be one member of council that would say it's most definitely required. Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
So through the chair, we are assuming that the January date for a transit day, and I know that Dan has been working with Debbie in terms of starting to develop the content that they would bring forward on that day.
Okay. Let's confirm. General Manager McKinnon, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we'll be in front of you next Friday with information to address everything that you've identified.
And through the chair, just, I'll take this opportunity with respect to the transit strategy. While I've touched upon the FDE and the contributions to reserves and the financial impact of the transit strategy, that is net of. We are assuming, you'll recall, when the transit strategy was approved in principle by council, you approved a forecast in terms of fare increases. I believe it reflects a 10-cent fare increase effective September of 2018. So I just wanted to include that reference.
Mike, lastly, Mr. Deputy Mayor, slide 34, Mike, again, dealing with the wind legislation on the hydroelectric fund and the hydroelectric costs. Is that 5%? Is that favorable to us? In other words, are we, as a corporation in this budget cycle, and in light of her legislation, the 25% reduction last year, are we corporately benefiting from the new legislation, Mr. Deputy Mayor? Was that simply for residential?
So through you, Mr., through the chair, is, I'll ask Dan, maybe when Public Works report back. It's my understanding that that is targeted to residential and small commercial, but maybe Public Works staff can include that as an update during their departmental presentation.
Perfect, okay. And lastly, Mr. Deputy Mayor, if you'd come back to me after all the speakers are exhausted, I have, in light of correspondence, we've just received, General Manager Zagarek, from HSR Director Dela Vadove, regarding 271, I suspected the list was long, I never thought it was that extensive, 271 outstanding bus shelter location requests that have been on the docket for X number of years. I have a notice of motion that Councillor Marula was kind enough to, second, if I could, we could waive it at the appropriate time. And basically, Mr. Deputy Mayor, would say that staff would meet with each ward councillor as soon as possible to go over a list, the outstanding list to date, to determine priority locations within each ward showing on the outstanding list, and report back during this budget process with the funding coming from the transit shelter reserve. Just to put everyone on notice, come back to me once you're finished before the meeting's adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. And Councillor Jackson, could I just ask, do you click your name right now? Just turn yourself off and click yourself on. Just click the button again and you're on the queue. Yeah, go for it. Councillor, so Marula would be second time. Councillor Partridge, you've spoken already, so we're on, no, pardon me, I'm mixing up questions from the last presentation. So Councillor Marula, remind me, are you second or first time?
I'm second.
You're second, so we'll go to Councillor Partridge.
Just to clarify.
Nope. Very good. Oh, good. So it's coherent and good to go to Councillor Partridge. Here we go. Councillor, you're on.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate that. It's only the first week, we're getting used to this new system, so it's only the first week, guys.
I might just say this out loud, colleagues, I'm finding that frankly, the number one challenge with the system is when it comes to second-time speaker lists. There is no built-in apparatus for managing second-time speakers. So I just say that aloud, it's worth saying aloud, I think, so.
Yes.
Stephanie, would you like to comment?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The alternate list does not work for second-time speakers. You have to go through the first-time speakers list. So unfortunately, what you have to do is almost wait until the first-time speaker list is done or manually keep your second.
Which is what I've been doing. I just kind of say it out loud for the sake of saying it aloud. So sorry. Councillor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I believe I have the floor. Thank you. I appreciate the previous speaker raising a couple of issues, you know, certainly with regards to the transit, and I will ask a question and look for a comment here, but I just wanted to reiterate that I've heard from two long-term care facilities now in Waterdown regarding the concerns they have with the loss of the larger buses, which I believe are being sold. And the key issue that they identify is the accessibility. And I'm just going to read from their email. If they no longer have these buses, we will be required to have two or more of the smaller buses, which are also no longer accessible as they have a step to get into the seat as well as all of them, you know, don't necessarily show up at the same time. The step will prevent many of our long-term care residents from attending the numerous events that we go to. So I think the accessibility issue is what really concerns me, and I'd like a comment from our transit director, she's not here, our GM, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have that information with me, but I can ask Debbie to ensure that when she gives her presentation next Friday, she can cover that material.
And I do appreciate that. I know, you know, it also says in the email that on November the 2nd, there was an ATS meeting, which they did attend, both long-term care facilities, and really felt that their concerns fell on deaf ears. I'm reading this from their email, this is not me editorializing. And they are only looking at what money can be saved. We almost had a resident fall while trying to get out of her seat in the smaller bus during our outing in September as she has poor eyesight and dementia, which many residents do have challenges on. So, you know, I appreciate the flexibility and opportunity to read that out loud. This email had been forwarded on back in December, I believe, when it came in, and been responded to by staff, so I do appreciate that. But, you know, certainly the accessibility issue to me is of huge concern to our seniors, especially out in, you know, the rural areas where these buses will be traveling. So that is my comment. Thank you, Chair.
An important one. We'll move on to Councillor Marula.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And it's moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Jackson, whereas Bill 148 and other recent provincial legislation has increased the cost of municipalities in Ontario of doing business, whereas provincial downloading represents nearly half of the City of Hamilton's operating budget, deeming the present formula regressive in nature and unsustainable. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor corresponds with the Premier of Ontario advocating...
Sorry, Councillor Marula, I don't think we have quorum. Am I wrong? So, Councillor Marula, once you're done reading your motion, it can't go on the floor, so...
Well, I can read it and then we can wait, right?
Okay, we have quorum now.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, you're not on motions yet. You need to actually wait until you get to notice.
Oh, okay.
This is a motion, you haven't received the presentation.
That's right. It's part of the presentation.
Let's receive this.
You still have to receive the presentation first.
And then bring it forward.
And then bring it...
I'll move that we receive the presentation then.
Great. Seconded by Councillor Collins, to receive, all in favor.
Very.
That was a re-presentation for the report.
And now I can go to motion.
No, 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 we have the report. Madam Clerk, we have to do the report now, right? That's what you're going to say? So Councillor Partridge, Councillor Whitehead for the report, all in favor.
Very.
Councillor Marula, please read out your motion from...
And now I'm just going to get to the action part of it. So it's therefore be it resolved that the mayor corresponds with the Premier of Ontario, advocating a funding formula to establish a revenue-neutral scenario, thereby mitigating the chronic underfunding of shared programs that worsens the provincial downloading crisis the City of Hamilton has been saddled with for decades, and that we CC AMO, MPPs as well.
Right. Seconded by... Jackson.
All right, discussion, colleagues. I see no indications, or no, I do. Councillor Whitehead?
Yeah, I can.
But, sorry, Councillor Jackson, are you wishing to comment on Councillor Marula's motion?
I'm pretty sure she is.
So we'll go to Councillor Whitehead for comment on the motion?
No, I can't hear you.
Oh, no, no, you can, anyway. Councillor Whitehead, you're on.
Yeah, so I fully endorse it. I think you have been... I can't hear you.
I did? Oh, I pushed the button, sorry, I'll push it again. I can't rely on my fingers.
I certainly support what...
My fingers are weak.
What Councillor Marula's putting forward. There's another piece that's not capturing that, you know, it's going to rear its head very soon. We have over 700 clients in residential care facilities in the City of Hamilton, and with the legislative changes with the wage issue, I understand. I understand that too. I'm just giving an example of the reinforced Councillor Marula's comment that some of the legislative and downloading changes have broader impacts than direct services that the city council is delivering.
Okay. Councillor Marula, I can respond to that. So, Mr. Chair, if you don't have any indications, people will wish to speak on the motion, therefore call the branch of law, please. Very, very great. Any votes? Does the Chair have any thoughts?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, thank you so much. So my notice of motion I'm placing for the record, and then I'll, Councillor Marula will second the waiving of it, if hopefully I could get support from this table, that staff be direct, in light of the recent correspondence we just got today about transit shelters and the outstanding list... Counselor Jackson? All right. So as you know from your indications, people will wish to speak on the motion, therefore call the question all in favor.
Carry.
Great, so we vote. That's carried. Counselor Jackson? All right. So as you know from your indications, people will wish to speak on the motion, therefore call the question all in favor. That's my notice of motion. And I'm now moving, seconded by Counselor Marula, Ward 4, rules of order be waived to allow for the introduction of the motion, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I mean, so all in favor of waiver?
Carry.
Carried. And sorry, Clerk, did we need waiver from Counselor Marula's? Great, so let's do that now retroactively. Counselor Marula, Counselor Collins for waiver, all in favor.
Carry.
That's done. Sorry, colleagues, Counselor Jackson, please go ahead.
So, Mr. Deputy Mayor, moved by myself, seconded by Ward 4 Counselor Sam Marula, which I just read out about the transit list and the staff meet with each one of us during this budget process and report back before the budget process is over, hopefully funding and looking after at least what we consider on behalf of our constituents, the priority locations in our boards. Thank you.
That's good. So Counselor Whitehead, you call Counselor Partridge for...
Oh, I'm just going to...
So I very much support the motion brought forward by Counselor Jackson. I just want to note, though, that there are no Ward 15 bus shelters on that list. So I really think it's important that staff meet with all the counselors.
I need one of the cake.
I'll take that under advisement, sir, absolutely. I will take that under advisement. No free publicity, though, at this point. But if you could please, through you, Chair, did the General Manager make note of that for our conversations? And I wholeheartedly support the motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead, are you speaking to Counselor Jackson's motion?
No.
No, I have no further indications.
And Counselor Partridge's point accepted and understood that she would, of course, be met with by staff as well.
Of course. So all in favor?
Carry.
Great. Counselor Whitehead?
It's just a notice of motion, I talked about it earlier.
Right rule, sir, or not?
No, 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 I think we got to craft the wording correctly. But it is a direction of staff to bring back a report in regards to the deficiency of culture diversification within our application process and looking at initiatives that can help encourage more people from visual minorities to apply for our boards and agencies.
Pardon me, Counselor, the clerk is indicating...
And the cost, and the cost implications that are associated with that.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'm going to prepare the notice of motion for Counselor Whitehead for council, and that will go back to a regular GIC.
Okay, so it's simply a notice right now? Okay, so that is fine. No further indications. I think it's time for adjournment, if I'm not mistaken. Counselor Conley? Oh, no, 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 it is not. Colleagues, it is definitely not time for adjournment. Clerk, please, go ahead.
Next page, we are going into closed session on 10.1.
Oh, close, slip that page, thank you so much. Closed session, I was too hasty. "Colleagues, my police have a motion to go into closed session to discuss item 10.1 pursuant to 8.1 subsections E and F of the city's procedural bylaw 14-300 and section 2392 subsections E and F of the Ontario Municipal Act 2001 as amended. As the subject matter pertains to litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the city and the receiving of advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communication necessary for that purpose. Counselor Partridge, Counselor Marula, all in favor?"
Carried.
Carried. Thank you. So we reconvene in five minutes?
We will.
Five minutes. See you soon.
Soon.
Thank you. "Colleagues, the press appear to not be interested in returning to hear our conclusion, therefore..."
Matthew's here.
Oh, Matthew is here. Matthew, Mr. Van Dongen, I apologize. So Matthew is here, and that gives me confidence that we can now proceed. So members of the public and colleagues, staff were provided with direction in closed session. My police have a motion to receive the relevant in-camera presentation. Counselor Conley, Counselor Vanderbeek, all in favor. Mover and a seconder for, to approve the following that report LS 160220A, respecting 2015, 2016 Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority levy appointment, remain confidential. Counselor Johnson, Counselor Whitehead, all in favor. Motion to adjourn. Far and Marula, all in favor. Carried. Thank you, everybody. Have a great weekend.